...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I ask for a roll ball please?
Yes, Councilmember LeFres.
I am here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Louise.
Here.
Vice Mayor Legolia.
Yes.
The mayor of the mayor.
Here. Uh, before we start the next phase, I would like to, uh, I asked permission from the court and she said I could. Uh, tomorrow, starting at, I believe, three thirty in the main house, uh, is the Easter egg stuffing party. There'll be meats and things, so if you or any members of your family, smaller members of your family, you're all welcome. There's like two hundred, uh, two thousand eggs thinking, or something like that, that they have to stuff, uh, and it would be great if they had a little bit of help. So, um, if you have the time, it's gonna run for approximately two hours. So, from planning three thirty to five thirty, if you go at the beginning, you do not have to stay until the end, obviously. They're not gonna lock the doors. Uh, but any help that they can get would be very much appreciated. So, thank you very much for that. Um, Katie Klax is organizing it, and it's in the main house in the, in the, uh, in the park. Okay, so we have a few proclamations. Uh, Joe's got the first one. So, Joe?
Okay. Then I'll be bringing up dispatcher Christie Cisco with me. She'll be, she'll be actually reading the first portion.
Okay.
Yeah. There you go. Perfect. Yeah, right there.
On behalf of the mayor and the city council, I would like to honor the contributions of all communications personnel in the public safety arena for their continued efforts to preserve public safety through our nine-one-one, non-emergency lines, and dispatch of our police personnel to thousands of calls for service each year across the nation. We would like to declare National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April fourteenth through twentieth, twenty nineteen, so everyone can be made aware of the hard work and dedication which provides a vital link to the public safety services on which we have come to rely on every day.
Thank you. And I should just say that dispatchers in general do not get the credit that they deserve. Uh, and especially in our small center, you would think there's not a whole heck of a lot going on. You hear Atherton and you think, well, how hard could it be to dispatch in there? I'm telling you, they answer the phones, they gotta deal with officers that are out in the street making traffic stops, um, who don't realize that the dispatchers are really busy doing other things inside. And when you take also into account that they're addressing people at the front counter. And bottom line, for our town, they're probably some of the most important people because for our residents that like to call a lot. That's, that's the first, that's the first voice that you talk to. And so our dispatchers know you all a lot better than, than many of us do. And when there's an emergency, there are the people on the phone that are trying to keep everybody calling. So, thank you for all that you do. Much appreciated.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, um, we have, uh, two proclamations, uh, for the Fishers. So, many of you know, um, both DeeDee and John were members of the council and they participated very heavily in town activities, uh, and in the past also, uh, DeeDee, uh, had also participated in, uh, serving on the civic center, the different civic center committees that we've had as they migrated through time and changed their name and things like that. Um, and so we thought it would be appropriate, uh, that we would at least recognize those. So, I, I won't read everything on that, but I just more or less give them the, uh, the credit that they're due, uh, in a combined manner. But we have a proclamation for each of them. Uh, DeeDee and John are moving out of Atherton, as I mentioned, and the town would like to recognize their services to the Atherton community. Specifically, DeeDee served on the Atherton council for twelve years, from November nineteen ninety through November two thousand and two, with three years of those serving as mayor, from ninety-four to ninety-six, and again from two thousand to two thousand and one. John also served on the Atherton council for eight years, from March seventy-eight to Nov- through November nineteen eighty-six, with one of those years, uh, years serving as mayor between eighty-five and eighty-six. So, we'd like to commend them for their outstanding contribution and service to the Atherton community, uh, and we wish both John and DeeDee, uh, well in their new venture, and, uh, hope they come back and visit us, especially as we're opening up our new building, which they participated in. So, thank you very much, uh, for the Fishers. And we have the proclamation that we'll end up giving to them and, and, uh, either getting it to them before they leave, or be, or mailing it to them if they snuck out of town without receiving it. Okay. Then we have, um, a recognition for another person, so you can come up.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we have, I don't know if people all know, Alicia. Alicia is the, the head of the, what used to be called the Atherton Dames, the Friends of Holbrook Palmer Park. She's also serving on the, uh, Park Foundation, and she serves on the, um, on the Park and Rec Foundation. So, whereas Alicia Wacowski has served on the Atherton Park and Recreation Committee, the Holbrook Palmer Park Foundation, and the Friends of Holbrook Palmer Park, originally known as the Atherton Dames Organizations, and whereas Alicia has been very instrumental in helping us raise funds and sponsor activities to enhance our use of the park for Atherton residents, as well as others in the surrounding area, as well as helping to fund and sponsor other charitable and educational activities that promote awareness of the park. And whereas Alicia helped organize the town's largest event in the park, the annual Easter egg hunt, which is coming up, and hopefully you all will participate in, uh, after you stuff the eggs, uh, and, which attracts hundreds of families, not only from Atherton, but people around here, and helps fund additional future events. And whereas Alicia has been serving as president of the Friends of Holbrook Palmer Park, and in addition to the Easter egg hunt, also helps in, uh, organize the annual holiday tea, which many of you have gone and brought your children to, uh, as well as the new residents' welcome events and a regular annual meeting. And whereas, the city council of Atherton would like to recognize her for her distinction and her dedication to the park and for her outstanding contributions to the community. So, therefore, as the mayor of Atherton and on behalf of the Atherton City Council, I do commend the outstanding contributions and efforts made by you in support of the time here in Atherton. So, you'll get one of these that's framed. This one's not framed beside, but one up there is, so. Okay, so thank you for coming. You have to now stay for the whole meeting. That's part of the thing. So, thank you for everything, and I did make a comment. All right, great. Thank you.
And I don't know if it was included, but Alicia's been on the partner commission and a very significant contributor.
Well, thank you.
Okay. You don't have to stay if you don't want.
I'll stay for a few minutes. I'm just curious.
All right. Lastly, the last proclamation. If you may know, uh, the town of Atherton is a, is a tree city, and we've been a tree city for quite a number of years, over twenty-five years. And so, part of being a tree city is you not only have to have tree protection and really embrace the trees, but you also put a proclamation out that more or less makes your community aware of what's going on. So, we have an Arbor Day proclamation to proclaim that April eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen is Arbor Day in the town of Atherton, as well as other places. And we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts in, in protecting our trees and our woodlands, and further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts, their own hearts, as well as the hearts of their neighbors, and promote the well-being of this, uh, activity for not only the current, but also future generations. And so, um, there will be a tree planting in our park on that day. I believe it's at ten o'clock, nine-thirty in the morning, um, and we'll be planting a tree in, uh, in honor of our fallen arborist, Kathy Uz Anderson. So, uh, if you can come, that would be much appreciated. So, thank you very much for that. Okay? Um, do you have anything for the principal?
Uh, yes, he's prepared to step up to present his presentation.
Do I have this?
Yeah, it's on the board.
Oh, you're giving a presentation. You're not getting a proclamation. You're sorry.
Uh, yeah.
Next year.
Next year.
Jenny, do you want to?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay. All right.
Good evening, Atherton Town Council and residents. I've been an Atherton resident since nineteen ninety-eight and live across the street from Selby Lane School. It was in two thousand and three when I served on the Atherton Civic Interest League that I started attending Selby Lane School's site council meetings, where we formed Selby Education Foundation, a separate five-on-one C-three nonprofit, to help improve the academics at Selby Lane School. It's in my position there as president and board chair that I worked closely with Warren Cedar to help fund needed projects, programs, and professional development to improve the academics at Selby Lane School. Warren Cedar has worked in the Redwood City School District for twenty-five years and is the former principal of Kennedy Middle School, and helped establish North Star Academy as its first principal. He has been the principal at Selby Lane now for six years. During his tenure, um, Selby Lane enrollment has increased from six hundred and twenty to seven hundred and forty students due to a positive turnaround for the school climate and the programs he's established. While California testing standards has changed over these years, the academic results has risen sharply under his tenure. So, please welcome Principal Cedar.
Thank you. I have five minutes, is what I was told, so I'm gonna try to be, try to be quick. Um, I don't know if you're aware, the Redwood City School District is, went through budget reductions and a painful process, uh, but there's a silver lining. Uh, we will be merging with Adelante, uh, School, which is the first Spanish immersion two-way program in, in Redwood City, award-winning program. Uh, that site will be rented out, uh, for a cost-saving, and the, the program will continue and merge with the Selby Lane Spanish, two-way Spanish immersion program next year. Um, so, meeting with Jenny and Jerry Carlson and the Education Foundation, they thought it was, uh, important that I come and give you a little bit of information about two-way immersion and what is going on. Uh, there's a high demand for these kinds of programs across the country, uh, particularly in Northern California as well, uh, for immersion programs. We also started in Redwood City a Mandarin immersion, uh, two-way program. So, just quickly, I wanna talk to you a little bit about the difference, uh, what a two-way immersion program is, and what the difference is between that and a bilingual program. I wanna talk a little bit about our seal demonstrate. We're a demonstration site in the state of, uh, California. People coming, watching us teach, watching our teachers teach in transitional kindergarten through third grade, and just talk to you a little bit about the changes. But more than anything, I would invite you to come to the school, uh, to go through a tour with me, 'cause then you can see the kids and you can see in action way better than whatever I can capture on a PowerPoint. So, uh, we will be, next year, pre-K. We have, uh, three preschool programs there. TK, Transitional Kindergarten, I don't know if the council's aware, if you turn five after September first through December twentieth, your child can no longer go into kindergarten. They go into a, a transitional kindergarten, um, program through fifth grade. And so, there will, currently, we're, we're pre-K through eighth grade. So, there'll be no longer any middle school students at, at Selby Lane next year. And we will only have Spanish, uh, two-way immersion. Um, just quickly, two-way immersion is also referred to as the ninety-ten model, and ninety-ten refers to the language of instruction. And the critical difference between bilingual classes and immersion classes is there's not translation going on all the time. So, for example, if I'm in, I'm, uh, I'm at a French immersion school, and I'm an English speaker, and the teacher in kindergarten starts ninety percent of the day, the target language to be immersed in is French, but it's Spanish, is what we have. That teacher will continue to speaking in French during the, that instructional block of time. They won't translate into English. So, we start at ninety, so the, the difference between bilingual education is, uh, somebody learning a language is gonna wait, we're gonna wait for you to translate. We're gonna, you know, you can, I can be, "Empiezo a hablar español, español estoy hablando, blah, blah, blah." You're waiting for me to speak in English, then you're gonna be paying attention to me. So, you're forced to be immersed into the language. That's a, that's the critical difference. The teachers are not translating every, every, everything back and forth. Okay? So, the goal is by fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, they're reading, writing, speaking, understanding in both languages, Spanish and English, at or above grade level. And there's been a lot of research in the last five years in particular of the cognitive benefits of brain development, especially if you're able to read and write in two languages. Um, that's what we're looking for. There's, um, executive functioning, flexibility, being able to work, uh, multitasking, um, long-term benefits, preventing Alzheimer's, things like that. Uh, you can do the research. So, ninety-ten, basically, in kindergarten, they're saying ninety percent of the day in Spanish, ten percent in English. As you go up, you add ten percent of English. Until third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade, it's fifty-fifty. That's the language of instruction. The two-way part, let me get to that. You also hear it as two-way immersion. Two-way means half the class is native English speakers, half the class is native Spanish speakers. That's, that's what two-way means. So, they have the role models. So, even at recess, at lunch, um, PE time, they're constantly immersed in the language. They have role models for both languages. That's the, that's the ideal. Um, we're, we're lucky in Redwood City. We have a lot of native Spanish speakers, right? Um, so, going back, we're aiming for advanced levels of communication and literacy in both languages to get that cognitive bump. Uh, we want academic performance levels at or above grade level by the end of fifth grade. And then there's the added cultural, multicultural perspective, um, and strengthening positive relationships between communities in, in our global society. Other critical features are that the teachers, um, I, I talked a little bit about this. The, the teachers have specialized credentials, so that when we're merging the two schools, that's actually a positive thing for me, because it's very hard for me to find a teacher that has native Spanish, that also can pass the, the C best and get their, their teaching credential in English. Um, so I'm not competing for, for those teachers with Adelante. Um, so that's a positive thing. Another thing we've been working on is metalinguistic transfer. And that's just fancy words for saying, we are consciously teaching students how to compare and work with the two languages. Uh, for example, cognates, words that are the same in English and in Spanish, that, that ability to do that, um, helps their understanding and develops their fluency, and it's really important. It's a metacognitive important thing. Um, teachers use a lot of different strategies. I'm gonna talk about that in a second. We have, um, Sobrato Early Academic Language. We're a model school. And the target here is to work on academic vocabulary. It was originally developed for English-only stu- uh, excuse me, uh, English-language learners originally. That's what it was developed for, to develop academic language in thematic contexts. So, it, but what really works well with is English-only students learning a second language like Spanish. So, we've, teachers go through two years of training on these practices and, and how to teach for kinder through third grade. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. I'm getting a real cold. Um, and you'll see a lot of academic language around themes. So, kindergarten, for example, a common theme is community workers. So, this is a strategy called a drawn label. Students are not sitting in rows in desks. They're on the carpet. They're interacting with the language. Um, teachers are, are sharing, um, pictures, graphics, and graphic organizers to teach the language in a natural setting. Students are encouraged to speak, to use their vocabulary. Um, they'll use flow charts, um, Venn diagrams to compare and contrast. This is a unit on the right about, um, bushes and poles. Weather is the other unit there on the left. Categorical matrix, how do you organize the language? Dramatic play. They're not just playing. They're set up over there with sentence frames so that they can, they can speak and practice the language of the theme that they're working on. Um, at the end, they, at the end of the six-week unit, they have a gallery walk. Families are asked to come to the school. Students take them through the classroom and, and go over what they've learned. And they usually have some kind of, um, project that they're, that they're presenting on that day for the family. So, this push and pull, they were doing little cars. They made these little model cars and they did races. This is called a barrier game. This is just a little example. So, this student has to, he's not supposed to be able to see this hexagon, and he has to describe it so that he can guess it. And they're forced to use the language in that way, uh, to, to promote academic vocabulary. Um, this is the schedule. We have an early start, late start. You don't wanna hear that. Uh, we have a dress party. That's gonna change. You don't wanna hear that. There's a lot of work around, um, uh, building a positive climate at the school for the last eight years. We don't have as much of a, of an issue as my first two years there. I'll just be honest. It's my eighth year there, sixth year as the principal. Um, we're trying to catch students doing something good instead of catching them doing something bad. That's kind of the, the shift. We're trying to do three to four positives. Good job coming in, getting your, your materials out. Thank you for helping the person next to you. Um, good, good job. I saw how you, um, really persevered on that problem. It was a hard one. Hey, can you do me a favor and get, and then I'm gonna do my redirect. That's kind of the, that's kind of the, um, the gist. And we've been doing common expectations around being safe, respectful, responsible, friendly, caring, and focused. Clear, positive expectations for all the students. All the staff has to use that same language. Doesn't work if in your classroom, I can chew gum and wear my hat and run around and yell out, and I, and then I'm doing something completely different. We're all on the same page as, is the idea. Um, we have quite a bit of, uh, counseling support. We have, I'm losing my voice. We're, we're, um, we have a relationship with, um, a community-based organization called Acknowledge Alliance that provides counseling support for students, and they also provide, um, social emotional learning, um, for, for our students in the classrooms, which is really important right now. Um, this is a little bit about behavioral expectations. We have a very active, uh, volunteer community at Selby Lane that provide art in action, um, enrichment opportunities. We have vocal music, modern dance, and a, a garden program. Um, the Woodside and Atherton Gardening Club, Club, in particular, helped transform the Selby Lane Garden, and now we have actually garden classes as an enrichment. So, it's been a really positive thing, and that will continue next year. We also have a relationship with the Record Parks Department. They provide PE classes twice a week. We have a lot of homeschool connections. That's pretty normal in most schools, but we have, I try to do a lot of events that students, um, feel good about, um, presenting something, or singing, or dancing, or, uh, something that they could remember. They might not remember me, but they might remember coming to trunk or treat, where we do a, students don't dress up after school. They go through the parking lot, staff and community members, um, they decorate their trunk of their car, and the students go through and do, we call it trunk or treat. They'll remember that forever. They won't remember my name. Something, something that's fun, right? Um, so, these are some of these events. We have a big event that you're invited to, the Dia de los Niños event, on May eleventh, um, where you can come dunk me in the dunk tank. Uh, it's, it's, there's, there's a lot of things going on that day, and there's a lot of partnerships we have in the community that help, uh, to make that, make that happen. Um, the campus also has gone through some changes, uh, modernization. The back parking lot of Himmel will, uh, over the summer beginning, the, the solar panel reflectors, um, you know, the ones on the, on the, they're like stilts. I don't know how you call them. Pillars. They're, they're lifted up above. That's part of the bond. We're also moving our offices into the front. That'll be happening next school year. Um, there's, there's been some transformations too in, in how we deliver instructions. So, the, so these screens that you have here, we don't have these in the classroom. We'll, we'll be having something like these in our classroom. Um, we typically, for technology, are using iPads in the K-two classrooms, and then Chromebooks. They're like little mini laptops in third through eighth grade, but it'll be third through fifth grade next year. Um, and then I'm, I know I'm probably talking too much, so I wanna know if there's any questions.
Elizabeth, do you have any questions?
I do.
She's over here.
I really appreciate this update, Warren, on the transformation over progress that Selby Lane School is going through. And I think that you're doing a great job in, uh, transitioning it. Um, um, as you know, my brother, um, retired from the, um, uh, Redwood City School District as a teacher, and, uh, actually, he's lived around the corner from Selby Lane School. So, he already gets hurt and, um, totally is supportive of what you're doing.
Great, thank you. Is he aware of the change for next year?
I'm not sure. He's been on vacation a lot.
Warren, do you have any idea?
Okay.
Do you have any idea how many students you're gonna have?
Yeah, we're, I already have four. The, there's just so much interest in the school for next year. I already have four full kindergarten classes for next year that have enrolled in one full TK class, and we're not even at the end of March yet. Um, I have families from San Carlos that are registering, from Pal- they're just, there's such a, um, interest in the program. Um, I think, you know, Selby Lane's reputation has improved dramatically, but Adelante's reputation was already there. They were, you know, state recognition, blue ribbon school. When we have people coming to visit, uh, immersion programs, they go to that school. Um, so that's really helped a lot. I think, um, I had a question earlier about if the, you know, where are they gonna be coming, right? It's a, it's not a neighborhood school. They can come from, it's a school of choice. They can come from anywhere now. But I think the end result is, a lot of families currently at Adelante live on the, on the west side of Redwood City. Um, I think there'll be more traffic coming from that area than from the east side of El Camino. Um, I think that'll be, you know, there's gonna be a major demographic change. Right now, I have about eighty, eighty percent of the students on free and reduced lunch. Adelante's like thirty percent of the students on free and reduced lunch. And my immersion classes, my, my kindergarten immersion classes, right now, the ones that are currently there, that's also probably about fifty percent free and reduced lunch. So, the, the demographics are, are changing quite a bit. And the parent involvement is amazing. The, we've had two merge, uh, events and, um, just really, really good stuff. So, I, I really look forward to it. Yeah.
Just a quick question about relationships with, with neighbors. What, how do you characterize them? Is there any, any wish you, you'd have for them, or, or any change, kind of, like that?
Why are you laughing?
He's living across the street. He's asking about neighbors.
Well, um, I think the, the neighbors are really, um, they've been really supportive. I haven't had any really, um, difficult conversations with anyone, really. Um, you know, the, the Education Foundation's been very supportive. Connie Laurie's been very supportive of the school. I, I would like to see more engagement, I think. And I think, um, we have a reading partners program that I'm very proud of. It's, um, we have about sixty community volunteers that come in and read and, and work with students twice a week. Uh, we also have an experience core program for retired, um, retired worker, community members that come in and work in the classroom. They, you know, they, they engage in that way, and I, and I really like that. I, I would like to see, um, you know, the tech community get more involved, you know. It, I, it's just so ironic to me that we're in this, um, pocket of wealth, and the Redwood City District, School District had to, had make up a four-million-dollar structural deficit. It just doesn't make sense to me, you know, 'cause we're on a limited revenue. Uh, I'm not gonna get into all the politics, but, you know, that, I would like to see more engagement in that way as well. I think there could be some, you know, some direct, um, financial engagement. I, I don't think it would be that unheard of, quite honestly. So, um, but really, I, I like to build community. That's why I like, and I like working with kids. I like working with the community. So, I think it's been very supportive. Yeah.
So, you, you have four pre-K classes and a holiday?
I have, uh, I have three pre-K classrooms. So, two of them are half-day. They go nine to twelve, one to four, and one is full day, nine to four. And I have-
That's what you currently have, is-
Yes, and that will be in next year as well. Then I have one TK class, Transitional Kindergarten. And then, right now, I have four projected. They're already signed up, ready to go for next year, kindergarten classrooms. And then I'll have five first-grade classrooms, five second-grade classrooms, and then it's, I believe it's four, 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 for third grade, four fourth grade, four fifth grade. Class size, if you're interested, is, uh, K-two. It could go up to twenty-eight to one, twenty-eight students to one teacher. And then third through, third through eighth in the district, but third through fifth next year could go up to thirty-one students. That's what, that's what it basically will look like.
So, Jenny and Warren, thanks for coming. Uh, it sounds like it's an exciting program. Um, we'd like to know how it material- We'd like to know how it materializes, what type of progress you're seeing. Perhaps it might be worthwhile for you, Warren, and George and I to get together. And then as future mayors come on, you can work with those future mayors. Let's see how the town could participate a little bit more or how some of the council could participate in some of your activities coming forward. Because I think that it's something that we would like to be involved in. It sounds like it's a great program.
Yeah, we would welcome it, welcome that. I'm also working with the Atherton Police around how to involve the community officer. We have some meetings set up in a couple of weeks. So that's happening as well.
All right, well, let's get in touch in the next couple, in the next month or so. As your school year winds down, you have a little breathing time.
Oh, I don't have any breathing time. We got double work going on right now, but it's good. I like, I do appreciate working, so.
Okay, great. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Warren.
Okay, now to the fun part of reading. We opened it up for public comments. So if you have something that pertains either, if it's on the, on the agenda, then if you can stay and wait and make that comment as the item comes up so the council can hear and consider your comments as the items are presented. But if you have a comment on something that is not on the agenda, we'd like to invite you to come up and speak now. And try to keep your comments within three minutes. Please remember that you may make a comment and it may be very provocative, but the council doesn't respond to those, okay? We may take an action item to address it at a future meeting. It's not on the agenda, so. Any public comments? Wow, okay, see it. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Mr. City Attorney, report out a closed session.
Mayor, there were three items in the closed session. Only two of them were heard. Item C, comprehensive labor negotiator was not discussed. Now, A, and public employee performance evaluation. The city council discussed process issues, but no action was taken. The second one was real property transaction. The city council discussed it and gave directions to the negotiator, although they got no items for the act of bond.
Okay, great. Next on the agenda is city manager's report. George?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have the written report in your agenda packet. During my three meetings, there were a couple of questions related to bicycle stops and tickets issued, total residential burglaries to date. That number is ten for 2019. And upcoming public safety meetings. Beyond that, there were no additional questions. The staff's here to answer any questions the council may have tonight.
Elizabeth, any questions on the city manager's report?
No, I got no comments present on the city manager's report.
Okay, any other members present? Okay. Seeing none, does anybody from the audience have a question or comment on anything in the city manager's report? Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar are items eight through fourteen. Does any member of the city council wish to have any of those items pulled for either fuller discussion and/or separate vote or comment?
Total number eleven.
Eleven, okay. Anybody else?
I'd like to pull number twelve.
Okay. Would you like to pull one?
No, there ain't any left. No.
Does any member of the public wish to pull any item that is either item eight through fourteen? We've already got eleven and twelve pulled. Seeing none, then we'll close that. Can I have a motion to approve the items that were not pulled?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, all in favor of approving item eight, nine, ten, thirteen, and fourteen?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number eleven, Elizabeth?
So I'm really, really happy that something like this was offered, is number eleven. So although I've never been in an restroom, I can only imagine that it's easy modeling. And I believe the women's room needs to be modeled. This is a lot of money that we're being asked to approve for this project. And so I guess my question is, I see the drawing, which shows creating, you know, handicap access and, you know, consolidating stalls to make handicap access. But I don't see any finishes. Is this the extent of what we're going to be doing? Are we not going to upgrade any of the countertops or the fixtures, wallpaper? And how is, how is, what is it going to look like in the final, final? And I'm just concerned, although I know Mary Luciston has great taste, that we're not maybe, I mean, I don't have what the finishes are to approve this project.
So Robert?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lewis. We have a outline of the scope of work as, I think it's attachment number three to the report that kind of outlines all the different items that are included and as indicated, we're going to...
Have already approved, have already approved?
No, there's a, I think it's attachment three that has revised final scope of work and it's split up for the women's and men's room. And so it does include not just changing out the fixtures and changing the partitions, but new tile floors, new panels in the bathroom, repainting, changing out all of the various upper entrances, including putting in new baby changing tables in both restrooms.
Yeah, those women do that occasionally.
They do.
But Robert, did we have that still have?
Yeah, so staff worked really closely with the representative that was designated by the Park and Rec Committee as well as with the event coordinator with catering by Dana to select finishes. And we do have some samples in our office in terms of the type of tile floor that was selected as well as some of those fixtures that are available for, for viewing. We're happy to share that. But I think it's a wood-looking tile for the floor.
So the representative from catering by Dana was Julie Simonian?
That's correct.
And Mary Luciston, right?
That's correct.
Who's Park and Rec.
That's correct.
So when I, I don't know. I have a hard time, you know, I'm sure they have very good taste, but it just seems like this is something that is part of our overall looking deal. And if we're not given the full presentation and it's kind of, I mean, they're not licensed interior decorators or contractors. I find it a little hard to approve something that I can't visualize.
Any other questions for Robert?
I do. Since Elizabeth opened the door a little bit. Do you have any idea on the length of project time?
So I think it's approximately...
They said it would be about a month. So we would have to really work with Julie to find a date.
Okay, estimated start date?
We don't have one because this is the pushback for a while. And they don't want to give us a date until we have it approved by council. And then I have to work with Julie to find a date, so.
Gotcha.
There's a lot of pending...
Pending, we're flowing. And I'm assuming because catering by Dana is involved in the selection of materials, that they also are aware that it will conflict with events.
And that's the coordination that we're going to be doing with them.
Elizabeth, I just mentioned, because catering by Dana has been involved in the selection of the orange tiles, that they will be well aware of if it conflicting with any events. And of course, I was kidding on the orange tiles.
But, but your point addresses the timing.
This is the timing, yeah.
They're four days.
Well, I mean, these bathrooms have been this way for a long, long time. Timing of the start to the finish is an issue.
Yeah.
Exactly. I think that's, that's, that's an issue about the timing, the start to the finish. How long is it going to take once you start? But I think...
Is that a question, Elizabeth? Because we're in questions.
Are, did councilmember B pose a question about the start to the finish, how long that would take?
Yeah, they're, yes, yes, they're not aware exactly because it's a fluctuating date. It should take about a month. And the start date is kind of unknown. We have to coordinate that. And my second issue, my third issue was the issue with catering by Dana. They're aware that this will impact potential events.
And the answer, the answer was affirmative, that they're participating and setting the dates. If you could hear sound.
So my question is, this, these bathrooms have been this way for many years. And so now we're up against the law as to a starting, correct?
Yes.
Do you have a question or a comment?
It's a comment. I, I assume that if we approve it tonight, it'll start sooner.
That is correct. Yes.
That's a good question. All right. Any other questions from council? Before we ask public comments. All right, any public comments on this item, which is refurbishing the pavilion bathrooms, both men and women? Do you want to say anything?
No, I said it's good. It's nice to know that we're moving forward with this.
Okay, then we'll close public comments. Now we'll bring it back to final discussions before we take a roll call vote. My quick comment would be, I would have no problem moving forward provided that as somebody has said that they have some concerns over the finishing, that they, that person or any council member could see what the finishings are prior to you finalizing the contract. Is that something that we could do?
Yes.
Are there any other comments?
Well, I, I really can't vote on something that I don't know what I'm voting on. Because I can't approve something that I don't know what it looks like. And I don't know what it looks like. And you don't know what it looks like either. I mean, you're just kind of rubber stamping something that, you know, it's, and maybe it's just like, it's a more modern look. So what does that mean, a more modern look?
I have a motion. I would move that we approve item eleven, subject to councilmember Lewis, going to Robert's office and looking at finished materials. And if she has any comments on those materials, to communicate them with Robert and with the city manager.
Prior to finalizing the contract?
Prior to finalizing the contract, but if either she accepts what is there or her suggested revisions are acceptable, that the contract be finalized and moved forward and we begin construction as soon as possible.
I'd like the second. I think that's a better comment. So can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lefris?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wees?
Aye.
Vice Mayor DeGolia?
Aye.
Mayor Lefris?
Aye. Okay. Now we've got item twelve, which is approval of the contract amendment and extension of the event services contract with catering by Dana, which will be a two-year extension prior to going out and looking at another bit. So, Robert, that's you again.
Yes.
Help you answer any questions? I can't remember if I pulled this before, but no?
Yeah, you want me to say what I pulled? I, I pulled it because the staff report indicated what the fee arrangement is and makes a recommendation, all of which I support. But the staff report also disclosed that there was an accounting error in, I think, from the 2017 year that has not been rectified. And I think that needs to be rectified. It's a public obligation, I think, to fix that. And certainly catering by Dana had agreed to it. That was the contract. And we're changing the contract to the benefit of catering by Dana. That's the proposal, which I support, but I think we need to take care of the accounting.
So I'll take that one. Robert, absolutely agree. And in fact, Robert Barone and I spoke with the city attorney today about how just to do that.
Great, okay. That hadn't been communicated, but that's why I pulled it.
Okay. Are there any other questions on item twelve? Okay, are there any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Last comments by the council.
Motion to approve. But maybe, can you communicate what the proposed solution is?
Well, you'll have to wait unless, because there's a motion that's been made.
Can I have a motion to approve with the modifications, subject to the city attorney and city manager's approval?
Or you can withdraw the motion till it's explained.
I'll withdraw it and let's explain, since you guys...
We're going to be communicating with catering by Dana exactly how much that discrepancy is. It has been modified probably since the staff report. We've uncovered some additional discrepancies. So we're going to go back to them and attempt to claw back that difference, either directly or through some services delivered to the town over the next two years. Because we're in the park and we're going to be using those facilities more than we do now. So there's some setup and take-down our staff do that we might have catering by Dana staff do for your charge and attempt to balance out some of that.
So it could be treated essentially as a credit that they work off either by us not paying some fees that we owe in the future or buy some services?
A variety of potential solutions. It's not a direct check back to the town sort of thing.
The, it sounds like the figures have shifted again. I didn't realize that. Which means that this moved twice. Is there something going on there that we should be focused on or that you should be focused on?
Yes.
Is it limited to the park or is it a wider...
It's limited to the park. And this particular contract is the only one other than the building department contract, that there is a shift of revenue to the town after a certain threshold is reached. The one for the building department, we get submitted the invoice and then staff validates it against the numbers. The catering by Dana contract, staff is actually responsible for tracking the numbers that come in. Once they reset threshold, calculate the difference. That was missed. And so, yes, it does need some more...
But it's just an annual thing. Someone's got to remember it. Okay, that's not a great process.
Correct. And so we're going to be approving that.
Not at all. I agree, councilmember Lefris. I think there needs to be better checking down.
Yes.
Maybe you can come back and inform us of what you're planning on doing in the future.
I will.
All right. Okay, so with that explanation, are you comfortable on moving forward?
Yeah, I would move that we approve item twelve with applying the overpayment as essentially a reduction of what we have to pay them in the future. We don't need to get the money from them now. I'm very comfortable having that applied from what we need to pay them in the future. And I suppose we can always get services from them anyway, right?
Correct.
As long as it's within your authority, you can just do that.
Correct. I'll say, I'll report back to the council on exactly what corrections are made to that process, and what services were just, you know. I'll say.
Carrie, second guess. Can we have a roll call vote?
Council member Lepres?
Aye.
Council member Louis?
Aye.
Council member Wees?
Aye.
Vice Mayor DeGolia?
Aye.
Mayor Lepres?
Aye. Okay.
Mayor, did you want to do a roll call vote for consent or consensus agreement?
Sure. Okay, we're, we're revoting on the overall consent. And that's when we voted for everything other than item 12 and 11.
Yeah. These motions, I believe, second by DeGolia. Roll call vote. Council member Lepres?
Aye.
Council member Louis?
Aye.
Council member Wees?
Aye.
Vice Mayor DeGolia?
Aye.
Mayor Lepres?
Aye. Okay. So now we move on to item number 15, which is the waiver request for Ensmel School. So, Robert, again.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In February, we were contacted by the graduating class school picnic organizer at Ensmel Elementary School. They are requesting a fee reduction waiver similar to years past, wherein we've reduced the fee to what it used to be before, some of our increases to $500. And council has approved this request for the two prior years of graduation, for the graduation picnic. It will be held at the North, it would be held at the North Meadow to get restroom usage and other usage of the carriage house. The one change that we have is at that point in time, we're anticipating that staff will be relocated to the park in the temporary facilities. And so the, there is going to be a little bit of overlap in terms of usage, but most of the kids, or the kids will be walking over from Ensmel Elementary, and so car, car conflict won't be an issue.
Are there any questions on this item? Elizabeth, any question?
No, not at this time.
Anybody else? My only question is, have we thought about and discussed with the Ensmel School people the fact that in addition to taking up part of the parking lot, there will be other car traffic coming and going just adjacent to the North Meadow? And perhaps it might be prudent to move it to a safer area. Have we had that conversation?
We have not.
I think we should. I, I, you know, the fee could be helped. Same, I don't have an issue with that, but I do have a pain to see an accident here, because these are little kids.
Okay.
Are there any comments from the public? Okay, closing public comments. Last comments from the council.
Well, I have a comment, which is, I, I would like to make the motion to approve this, but I'd like to clarify that so long as in the future, there is a request to keep the fee at $500, which is, appears to be this one, and which I support, that it can be put on the consent calendar. It doesn't need to be put on the regular agenda. So I guess that's just a comment to staff, but if others agree, then I think, I mean, maybe if they were asking for 100% waiver, it should come to the council, but if it's a request to keep it at $500, I don't think it needs to go on the regular agenda.
No, I mean, subjectively, I think it's great to see the park use exactly the use the park should have. I think it's a, I'm not quite curmudgeonly enough to be, you know, to doubt problem this. So I, I think it's, I think it's great. I'm happy to go with the $500. It was, I think it's a nice compromise.
Somebody want to make a comment? Unless there are no other comments.
I, I would second, uh, Vice Mayor DeGolia's motion to have this go forward, because I've experienced it many times over the past years. And I don't think it means a lot of depression. I think it certainly is something that is reasonable for the town to drive for this school. And we don't need to spend a lot of time in negotiations on this. So I'd like to second Vice Mayor DeGoya's motion.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote?
Council member Lepres?
I'm sorry, just a point right here. I, I did, I heard Rick really make a suggestion about process next, and I'm going around. As opposed to approval. It's, it's a motion to approve.
Yeah, yeah.
And in the future, it could have a primary consent.
As a staff version. Elizabeth, second.
Council member Lepres?
Aye.
Council member Louis?
Aye.
Council member Wees?
Aye.
Vice Mayor DeGolia?
Aye.
Mayor Lepres?
Aye. Okay. Next is item 16, which is the Earth Day event and the budget recommendation from the EPC. So that's Stephanie.
Yes, good evening. The Environmental Programs Committee has prepared a recommended 2019 Town Earth Day Event Work Program and Budget for the council to consider. The event itself has been identified with the purpose and intent to provide community education outreach on the topic of climate change, in the attempts at trying to address some of the identified greenhouse gas reduction measures in our town's adopted Climate Action Plan. The event is envisioned to be a symposium of expert speakers who would speak on the matters of climate change. Some speakers that have potentially been identified so far include staff from both Peninsula Clean Energy, San Mateo County Office of Sustainability, some representatives from private companies that provide home, residential home energy audits, either free or very low costs. These individuals, again, are envisioned to speak to the community, provide education and resources available for the town's residents as it relates to what town members could do to help reduce their carbon footprint. The event has a tentatively targeted date for Saturday, March 4th, at the Jennings Pavilion for a few.
It's not March.
Uh, May 4th, excuse me, for a few hours that would begin about noon. The date was thought to follow after Earth Day, which is actually April 22nd this year, so try not to compete with some of the other local events that may be happening, as well as facilitating a location to hold the symposium. The estimated budget to pull off the event, given the vendor speakers, marketing, and other logistical efforts, has found to be well under the existing approved budget amount for the EPC's general support work at $5,000. As it relates going, taking a step out outside of the Earth Day event, as it relates to the town's adopted Climate Action Plan and the EPC, to give a brief update, I would call it, on the EPC's progress and steps that have been taken to implement the Climate Action Plan, specifically some of those greenhouse gas reduction measures that the town's adopted plan have targeted to help meet that reduction of greenhouse gas. So what the EPC has done so far, last year, held a Earth Day event of a film screening and additional symposium speakers at the Menlo Arts Performing Arts Center. There have been some substantial updates made to the town's sustainability website. These include resources and web links for the community on topics of energy efficiency, waste reduction, water conservation. A new webpage also was created where residents can go in online and actually calculate their own home's energy carbon footprint, plugging in some personal data for their residents. What's currently in progress right now, obviously, we're planning, the EPC is planning a 2019 Earth Day event on the topic of climate change. The EPC is also, has been in works developing both digital and hard copy educational materials that would be distributed townwide, again, on the matters of water conservation, waste reduction, and green building elements. And one more point that I wanted to illustrate is that comes late spring of this year, the San Mateo County RICAPs, the Regional Climate Action, Action Planning Suite, in which Atherton is a part of, and all other jurisdictions in the county are also a part of, will be updating the baseline data for all of the cities and towns. So at that point, it will be a better gauge on how well Atherton and other cities are doing in actually reducing those greenhouse gas reduction measures, and also help us evaluate how close we are to meeting our identified greenhouse gas reduction target, which is 17% by next year. So happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions for Stephanie?
I just have a, a general question. I love the idea of having private companies involved come in and do the home energy audits. How do we handle the issue of the appearance that we're, you know, recommending, and how many are they're getting the opportunity to present to accountable bodies, you know, to have a timely effect?
So what we've found is there hasn't been a ton of actually businesses that offer these services free of charge, and that's been the focus and efforts of the staff and the EPC. So we've offered it to any company or organization that may offer those services, and responded to the ones that have given us any kind of feedback, again, at low or no cost.
Lower than cost.
Any other questions? So I, I've got a couple of questions. So I see that we're bringing in PCE to talk about getting people essentially signing up and talking about the benefits of signing up to 50% renewable energy, or 100% renewable energy as the town currently is. And so I, I thought that we had like 99% of the people signed up. There was, that are, there's only like 1% or less than 1% that are on, that are still on DG&E. Is that not correct? Did you tell us that, Rick?
That's right.
So I, I'm not sure that I see much of a benefit of that. You know, I would recommend possibly having Silicon Valley Clean Water come and their general manager speak. I think that that's, they've got quite an exciting program out there. And, and I know their general manager would probably put on a pretty good show. I was also wondering what, in the past two years, we've had, you know, we've spent more money, and that's why we gave you, you know, the budget. And, you know, there were films that did attract a lot of people. Like last year, we, we had a lot of people there, and then we had the, some of the, the directors come and also give a speech on, on, in that case, it was New Nuclear Power. And I thought it was, it was very, very well received. Why did we decide not to, to bring in a movie that would be somewhat provocative and have a, a higher level speaker that would cost some money?
Well, there were EPC discussions related to movies, and there wasn't a topic or a movie specific, like there was the new fire last year that has been identified, that anybody was aware of, at least at that point, that really addressed the issue of climate change, trying to tie it back to the adopted Climate Action Plan, but.
So is, is everything finalized now? This is, other than maybe adding a speaker or two, you essentially finalized, and you're asking to have the budget reduced?
This is the final recommended work plan, so nothing has been formally done so far. And these speakers are just identified as potential speakers. There's actually an EPC meeting scheduled tomorrow, so depending on the action of the council taken tonight, we, as staff, would go back and inform the council of any further, or excuse me, the EPC of any further council direction on other identified speakers or other types of activities that this event could, or should, address.
Just, just to be clear, they're not asking for a budget reduction?
Yeah, no.
Go ahead.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
So I, this is a very pared down budget. And it's like 50% of what our overall line item budget in the town budget for the EPC at $5,000 is. And so I think that at a minimum, we're requesting the approval of this amount. But it, the, the planning is still in flux. We are, we have not secured, like, you know, the, you know, a speaker who may come in and say, well, I need, you know, an almiriam of $500 or something. And so I would beg the generosity of the council to not just focus on this amount as a hard and sound number, but at this point, this is looking like what we will all, probably spend up to a $5,000 limit.
All right, good. You have a question, Bill? Carrie's got a question.
Um, it's kind of a tear on Mike's question a little bit. Steve Mans in the staff report. Is it required to have a license by any, or laws by anybody that actually performs energy services or audits, or is it, anybody can throw out a shingle? Is there, is there any requirements to be a specialist? Or can I just call myself a specialist and go out there and do it?
In the field, I would not know the technical answer to that question.
It just, the, the reason why, it just kind of, it'd be like, for example, if it's required to be a licensed contractor, and we put him in here, and he wasn't a licensed contractor, again, he's here, yet it's almost an implication that he would be a licensed person, and it's kind of a implied endorsement, if I might say. And I would try to just make sure that we at least verify that if he's going to be on something, that we've done a due diligence to make sure that he's who he is.
But if, if, if I may respond, the councilor Wees?
Please, that needs a lot.
So as far as, you know, first in the field, one of the reasons why we were wanting to have people let from the PCE come and talk, it's not necessarily to promote the sign up for the PCE, or, because as you say, maybe 99% of Albatonians have already signed up for it, but they don't even realize what it is they signed up for, you know, completely, and how beneficial it is, not only to their pocketbook, but to the world at large in climate change. And just that type of education. And so would you say that those professionals, that we would have come speak from the PCE group, maybe it could be Council Vice Mayor DeGoya, would be an expert in that field? Or if you had someone from the county sea level rise stormwater management coalition that we're putting together, like maybe Leonard Patterson, would you think that he is an expert in explaining the importance of what we're doing here in San Mateo County to help the climate change effects in our county? That type of thing. So I, I kind of, I kind of push that one you a little bit, Council member Wees?
I'm okay. Thank you, Elizabeth. I'm okay with, I'm okay with.
Who is to say who is an expert?
I'm okay with a little pushback, but when somebody has home energy services, it's implied that there's a service provided by an individual. If this service is provided, requires somebody to be licensed, I just think that we should make sure that the person's licensed if there's a requirement.
Well, I think it's, I think it's similar to, like, Bill, I think it's similar to, if you go to the, the, the building department and say, I'm putting in a new driveway, would you make a recommendation? Well, they don't want to make a recommendation, because it's like an endorsement. So I've got no problem. In fact, I was, this was one of the ones I was planning on going to it. It sounded very interesting, so. But I can see that y'all's comments is that we're essentially endorsing, and I guess maybe we have to have some sort of disclaimer, right?
Mr. Mayor, just to be, totally clear, there's no legal requirement, I can reply real quickly, but there is an organization out there called Certified Energy Auditor. You can get a certification, and it requires, it's either be an architect, an engineer, or have training to do this, and that you have the, the financial wherewithal demonstrated. Now, I don't know that that's, I'm just sitting here doing research, but I did find out that the reason they came about was because there was no requirement. It's kind of like the old days, paralegal, she didn't have to do anything except say, I am one. And now there's a, an actual requirement in California to say that you are one. There isn't one for these people yet, but you could raise a level if you wanted to go to a certification kind of scenario.
Any other questions on this item? EPC.
On, on the item regarding Earth Day, or?
What we're just talking about, there's two items. What we're just talking about, there's two items here. One is Earth Day, and the other is...
Climate Action Plan.
Yes, okay, so on the Earth Day, are there any other questions on that? If not, we'll take public comments. Okay, seeing no public comments, then I'd like to, without any further ado, unless somebody has under a comment, I would like to at least make a motion that, that we ask the EPC to continue to discuss this, and that we don't limit the budget to, to the twenty-five hundred and change that they, that is in this write-up, but rather keep that five thousand dollars open so that they can explore other opportunities that would have more interest to the community and, and attract more, more people to a more exciting program, or, you know, one that might capture somebody that would come to just these four. I don't know how you guys feel.
All right, I would second that motion.
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Okay, all right. Any further comments? No? Want to take a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Lickers. Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor DeGolia?
Aye.
Mayor Whitmer?
Aye. Okay, the second part was the EPC and what their role is vis-à-vis helping monitor, helping craft, helping prioritize the, the town's Climate Action Plan and other roles involving environmental protection. Who's gonna talk about that? George?
Yes, so you have in the staff report, Stephanie articulated some of the things that the EPC has been doing with respect to the Climate Action Plan, but within their specific charter, there's only two items that are specifically called out, and me you wrote specifically saying Climate Action Plan. So comments by the council, or some of my conversations have related to, how do we know that they're providing input into the Climate Action Plan, what the priorities are, how does the council get engaged in that process? So one of the possible suggestions was to add an additional task to their charter that requires some sort of annual review once a year of the Climate Action Plan's priorities and help staff set those priorities with a recommendation to the council as a possible part of the budget process, so you can allocate funding toward it as well, based on what the council uses as priorities. And so we're looking for some feedback from the council in that regard.
Okay, any questions for George? Okay, any public comment? Seeing none, then we'll come back for further discussion with the council. Does anybody wanna go?
So if I, if I could just, this is Elizabeth. I in part believe that we should use the Climate Action Plan as a template for the activities of the Environmental Programs Committee under the peruse of the city council. There has been, I mean, there is a hierarchy that has been established by the city council that I believe the Environmental Programs Committee could take on item by item, and I honestly believe that some have already been ticked off. So I defer to our staff, Stephanie, on that matter for her comments and to educate us a little bit more about it.
Do you wanna...
Yeah.
...educate?
So there was, I can't call the exact number, I'm looking here, I think about sixteen specific greenhouse gas reduction measures, and the EPC went through all of those measures and prioritized the lists and shifted them around in order of one to sixteen, presented that to the council, and the council adopted that, I believe, about two years ago. And so starting with the top priority, prioritized items, which were in the fields of energy efficiency and public outreach and education, yes, EPC has done some activities to start hitting those targets, so to speak, as I previously mentioned, and are continuing to look at those, but when the Earth Day event comes in, that sort of puts those efforts on hold, and the EPC focuses their efforts on discussion and organization and implementation of an Earth Day event.
Okay, I just, just so I understand, all right, we, right now, EPC is doing this, is that correct? And so the question for us is essentially, should they be doing what they're doing today, or should that be part of their...
Or doing it more. They're not doing anything with the Climate Action Plan today, because that's not under the two items that they're... I mean, they provide input with staff based on those priorities, as Councilmember Lewis indicated, communicated. But what's not occurring is, you're not getting feedback, except in this sort of process, about, you know, which items have been ticked off, oh, the next eight or nine priorities, which ones, or maybe, maybe priority number four you can't really do, so they're gonna move to priority five or something like that. So we're just suggesting there'd be an annual process.
Just so, because the, the write-up says that staff is working with the EPC prior to any recommendation to us, and you see is, is involved in the process that way, correct?
So my perception of EPC and what they're doing is almost entirely related to Earth Day over the last year and a half. They certainly were very involved when we were creating the Climate Action Plan, and we put quite a bit of effort into that plan, and it's lengthy, but I know from my work with Peninsula of Clean Energy that things in this arena change rapidly, and they're not static. There's new reports that come out, there's new technologies and new applications, and I think that it would be good for us as the council to be explicit that we'd like the EPC to look over that Climate Action Plan, because we're not independently doing it. And, and I, I mean, as an advisor to us, I'd like them, I don't know if it's once a year, but I'd like them to look it over and make suggestions about, A, what we should prioritize, and B, what programs we might consider, which obviously would involve some investment if we actually implement something, for us to move forward and implement one of those items, rather than it just sort of being static. And I think it's totally in our control whether we do something, but it's not my understanding that they're really charged with proactively reviewing that Climate Action Plan and coming back to us on a periodic basis with recommendations. And if, if, if that is, then maybe we don't need this, but if it's not clear, I'd like to be explicit about it, because I'd like their, them to be looking at it, and anybody who is looking and joining the EPC to see that one of their duties as an EPC member would be, you know, know what the Climate Action Plan is and make recommendations on what the priority should be for us.
Okay, Elizabeth?
No, I, I was just gonna jump on what we're saying, because that is absolutely true. The passage of the Climate Action Plan was painful at best, and once it was passed, I think members of the, if you think, while we did prioritize kind of the, what we felt were the low-hanging fruits, without explicit council direction and a budget to go along with it, I, I think that the focus has been mainly on doing the Earth Day events and that kind of a thing. So I think they, it's now time for the Environmental Programs Committee to be re-energized and to be revitalized, and to feel that we have some support from the entire council to go after and try to implement items on our Climate Action Plan.
I think that if they're going to be doing anything in this role, and it sounds like they to some degree already have, we should have parameters of what that is, and if it's not there now, it's something that, as an advisory or working with staff component and recommendations to council, I have no idea what a dollar figure commitment would be to, to determine what the guidelines were, what the parameters were, what a budgetary guideline would be, so I think that'd be a kind of a definite talk for further discussion, because implementing anything that could come out of a committee could be quite costly.
So my, my thoughts are kind of multifold. First off, the EPC helped us put the Climate Action Plan together, and that was valuable input, and it gave us a framework for which we, you know, we iterated on and iterated on. And a lot of things have changed since the time that we finalized that. So it would be good to have the Climate Action Plan reviewed by not only us, but first by the EPC to identify where we are today, and then also where the county is as that report comes out. You know, their job is an advisory committee, and I wouldn't wanna change and treat that committee, which is in a committee of appointed people, not elected people, to have a tremendous amount of budget responsibility. I believe that when we passed the Climate Action Plan, we did significantly, we put a significant amount of money, well, not significant, but for some people it was, fifty thousand dollars, to, to have a staff member work with the EPC as we move forward, so I, I wouldn't want to go much over that at this point in time, but I do think that having people who are passionate about this and keep up with it to periodically, like annually, and I think now is the time to do the update, based on where we are with the civic center and other things, to give us an update and give us a picture, and then perhaps on an annual basis, the council would review the Climate Action Plan, which is something that we should, and use that in our budget process in looking at any additional projects we think we need to do, and, and move forward from there, as opposed to give a carte blanche, so it'd be essentially on a budgetary, year-by-year basis, that's gonna be two cents on that. So I don't know if there's any further input on that.
I would just...
So to the mayor, I don't think that anyone said anything about carte blanche, okay? So no one's expecting anything from there at all. I agree with what your premise is, but don't, please, please retract that, a carte blanche.
It would be a budgetary number that we would agree at a budget document, okay? Yes, Mike, you had something you wanted to add?
I was just gonna say that, that there, I think, were lessons to be learned during the process that led to the Climate Action Plan, because it was, I think Elizabeth said it was painful, and it was. So I wanna make sure that we don't run into the exact same problems again, I think there are some demands on staff time, there's some real, real issues, and I do think it's important that we learn from that, and we put, we be clear about the sort of, where the lines are for this committee, what they're doing, and, you know, what we're looking to improve that they're an advisory committee. Having said that, I think it was, it's enormously helpful, as I think as Rick said, to have somebody who really cares about this, who focuses on it and brings it back to us, makes recommendations.
So, somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we ask the Climate Action Committee to review the Climate Action Plan and to make any recommendations to us in terms of prioritizing items or adding items if they think there's something relevant, and that they, if they have an idea for a program, to present that idea to us, and I'm not suggesting that there be any budget associated with this, we can discuss it, and if we wanna budgetize something, we'll do that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before you go ahead, I believe Councilmember DeGolia said Climate Action Committee, you referenced, she meant environmental...
Environmental Program Committee, looking at the Climate Action Plan.
Right, no, the record had the, the correct, yeah, thanks.
Is there a second on that? Okay, go, go, vote.
Councilmember Lickers?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Vice Mayor DeGolia?
Aye.
Mayor Whitmer?
I give my carte blanche approval.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, next one is one we've all been waiting for. Heritage Tree. Sally, that's Stephanie, Sally, and Jen.
Jen, yeah, all three of us.
Okay. Make sure that presentation to load up. Here we go. So I will just begin with an overview of what happened at the last Planning Commission, City Council joint study session, in which direction was given to staff, how that direction was integrated into the revised draft Heritage Tree ordinance and associated guidelines document, that's before you tonight, and then the city attorney will step in and conclude the PowerPoint presentation component as it relates specifically to penalties and processes associated with both of those documents. Okay, so there's been a ton of background work that has brought us to where we are tonight. The most recent, again, as I mentioned, the joint planning commission and city council study session, in which very specific direction was given on what has been summarized in the area of seven topics as it relate to heritage trees, so we'll get into each of those seven topics. So the first topic of discussion that amendments were directed to staff to integrate into these documents had to do with the incorporation of amendments that would include arboricultural industry standards that are not currently in the ordinance pertaining to common tree activities. So this direction was intended to allow for consistency and ease of implementation with, again, current arboricultural standards in addressing common activities that are arborist seeds and that are conducted out in the field throughout town. Okay, so the second topic was a big one. This had to do with revising the current town's definition of what constitutes a heritage tree. So there was specific language that was directed for staff to integrate, and we'll go through what those language pieces are. The first was how to measure a heritage tree. Right now, the town measures that tree at four feet above grade, industry standard and consistent with other jurisdictions, that measurement begins at four and a half feet above grade. Currently, the ordinance does not have any language that addresses multi-trunk trees, so the draft before you tonight now includes such specificity for both multi-stemmed trees and split trunk trees, all fall under the umbrella of a multi-trunk tree. The third piece of amendment in revising the definition of a heritage tree, which had a substantial amount of conversation at both the planning commission and the council level, had to do with adding redwood trees of a certain size to be an additional protected tree in the buildable area. The buildable area for residential lot is that square or box, that's defined by setbacks based on the lot size and width. Currently, only native oak trees are protected trees in the buildable area, meaning all other trees that are in there can be removed by right. So this amendment would now have redwood trees, in addition to oaks, be a tree that is protected when one person wants to come in and build a single-family home in their defined buildable area. Based on that substantial amount of conversation, the staff report does discuss, it's not integrated in any of the draft ordinances or guidelines, but there is discussion in the staff report of a potential alternative for the council to consider and discuss tonight, which would be to not include redwood trees as an additional tree in the buildable area, however, for staff to monitor the actual amount of redwood trees that are being taken out in the buildable area over some defined period of time, so that the magnitude of what, or how many of those trees are actually being taken out can be evaluated and assessed, and then discussed if warranted. This could be done at the demolition stage of a permit, in which everything that is to be removed, even if it doesn't require a permit, needs to be shown on the plan, and that would be the mechanism of how staff... And that would be the mechanism of how staff could perform such monitoring. So some more changes to the definition of a heritage tree. There has been additional staff recommended language beyond what the council and commission discussed at the study session that now has some language in there that speaks to trees that are illegally removed. These, this language, and this will get discussed in a bit more detail later in the presentation, addresses stump sizes and/or trees' both age, growth rate, in helping to determine, was a tree a heritage tree if it was illegally removed based on whatever may be left of the tree. So the third topic of potential amendment was also a topic that had a lot of conversation and that had to do with the town's established Tree Protection Zone, or TPZ. The current town TPZ standard is 12 times a tree's diameter. Any tree, any kind of activity, has, under current regulation, a TPZ of 12 times that size of the tree, regardless-
Just to be clear, is that diameter, it's currently measured at four feet, it's proposed to be measured at four and a half, is that correct?
Correct, correct, yes. So the direction and substantive discussion that was had results in the proposed TPZ amendments before you tonight. The proposed TPZ amendments, I'll describe them as a tiered series of amendments. So different TPZs for different scenarios. The most basic, or I would say most widely-applied TPZ that would be found most consistently throughout the town would be for those properties in the R1A zoning district, a TPZ of 10 times a tree diameter. For smaller lots in the R1A, or for our smaller lots in our R1B zoning district, the recommendation is for an even further reduced TPZ of six times. And then further specificity is given to other types of construction and what those resulting TPZs would be, given on the magnitude of the type of construction. So for example, a fence or a wall would have a lesser TPZ than, say, the construction of a building or larger structure itself at five times a TPZ.
So if somebody was putting a fence on-
Yes.
-on the border property and it was a neighbor had a tree that was right on the border, they would not be able to put a fence there, is that what you're saying?
That's what the general application of the rule would mean and we'll get into TPZ exceptions in a few slides. That would be able to assess instances on a case-by-case basis under certain measurable criteria.
Well, if I could just-
Yeah.
Go a little further.
Mm-hmm.
What you're protecting is the root, so if at that tree, within the five, five tons or whatever, they weren't putting a pillar in there and it was just wood that was going over it, that would be a laugh.
I-
I see the attorney shaking her head, but I don't see you shaking.
Well, I was going to actually ask the town arborist to come to speak to that because I know that there's different root systems and their depths and their widths based on the species too, which would have a, could play a role in answering that question directly. So if, do we want to do that first?
All right, or bring it, let's make a note of that, there's other questions.
Okay. And then lastly, as it relates to this tiered series of TPZs, for hard surfaces, compacted surfaces such as driveways, pathways, walkways, patios, et cetera, a TPZ of no less than three times the tree diameter is recommended.
I'm sorry, since I'm reading the slide, it says, what happens if you have one you think had an existing? Are you able to put it back in the same place or is this in no case shall be less than three? Which trumps there?
The no less than three feet. So if a driveway was less than three feet-
Right.
-it could be replaced in presumably substantially the same location, but no less than three feet if it was right up to the tree.
Well, three times-
Or three times, three times the tree's diameter, yes. Okay, so the fourth topic of amendments to the Heritage Tree Ordinance had to do with the creation of a staff-level exception process to all of those TPZ standards that I just made mention of based on specific measurable criteria. At the time, at the last meeting of the commission, Planning Commission and the City Council, that criteria had not been developed. That criteria has now since been developed and recommended, again, based on professional arboricultural standards and industry documents in the field. So the process of a staff-level exception would be, again, lesser distances than what the previous slide just showed, specific distances. The materials that would need to be submitted in support of that has also been specified within these documents. It is a yes or no decision by the town arborist and any no decision, again, based on those measurable criteria, has the option to be appealed to the Planning Commission for review as recommended. Here we go, I spoke to this as well. The additional piece of recommended amendment related to the Planning Commission appeals outside of just the exception request to a tree protection zone also is to address requests to move heritage trees. There's not a ton of those that the town sees, but there has been some and the intent behind that process is the likelihood of a tree potentially dying in the moving process, just to allow that additional tier of review and mitigation if deemed necessary. Excuse me. So the sixth topic of amendment had to do with what needs to be required when a tree wants to be removed or as part of a site development plan. And that had to do with now requiring, as recommended, a tree inventory, both with photos and an appraisal of each tree. So that should any damage or disturbance or that tree be negatively affected down the line, there is some baseline to evaluate that tree at the time. Another piece that was discussed at the joint study session was what to do or how to analyze heritage trees on adjacent properties that were in close proximity to construction and/or shared property lines. So this is actually a practice that is currently being done by our building department in the permitting process. The recommendation is to codify that in the recommended language that's being presented before you tonight. And so what that would look like as recommended would be for any site development plan to not only include TPZ zones or information for the trees on the site, but also for trees that are in close proximity to that shared property line. So if there was, for example, an oak tree three feet from the site property line at 10 inches of diameter, it would need to follow that resulting TPZ that could fall over the shared property line into the site development.
Well, I saw that it was identified that on the site map you had to identify the heritage tree, but it didn't specify that you had to identify the TPZ. So I think that still, the TPZ part was left out.
Thank you. And then lastly was the bucket umbrella that covered all of the remaining textual enhancements to the Heritage Tree Ordinance. One was the point of adding eucalyptus trees to the list of non-heritage trees, given their high fire dangers. To also have some language that addressed landscape screening and other grading or detention irrigation-type systems and how those may affect a TPZ or a tree itself. There was also discussion on how to analyze stronger monetary penalties for tree violations and stronger language upfront to hopefully avoid those violations in the future. The next point I mentioned previously, there now is some recommended language that would address instances when trees are removed illegally and there's not much left of the tree in order to analyze what the appropriate penalty or remedy would be. There has also been some more articulated decision-making standards for tree removal applications, both at the staff level and those that get either appealed or applied for directly to the Planning Commission, more measurable criteria, less discretionary type of review. Excuse me. An additional staff, excuse me, staff recommendation that was following some of the direction and intent on how are we going to enforce some of these regulations have to do with the tree replanting requirements. This is not a new requirement, the current ordinance does require tree replanting for any heritage tree to be removed, even if it is dead or dangerous. There is no codified language, however, in the existing ordinance that really enforces that. That's left at the good faith effort of whomever's taking out that permit. And so the recommended amendment language would, for those instances, require that a security bond or deposit be submitted as part of that application and which would be refunded upon proof that that replanting tree or trees has actually been done. There was a request for staff to take a look and see what other jurisdictions were doing, prepared a summary of what five other cities in San Mateo County are doing and what we found is several are pretty open. It's not anywhere near as specific as what these recommended amendments are touching upon. It's very discretionary on a case-by-case basis, project by project, tree by tree, with the project applicant and the arborist or staff or contract arborist. Those that did have codified Tree Protection Zone standards, what we found was that the, a TPZ of 10 times a tree diameter was the number most frequently used. I'm going to hand it over to the city attorney who will talk a bit more about some penalties and processes type of amendments.
I'm pretty sure it's the assistant.
Oh, I'm, excuse me.
I want to raise, but that's all right.
I thought you were gonna- I'm pretty sure I'm not gonna do that.
No, 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 you're not ready, thank you, so much.
We're happy to answer.
Alrighty.
She's got enough motion.
I know, I feel really good right now.
I know, that's great.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So I feel like, this is a little bit like when you pick at something on your sweater and you end up unraveling it for our office, this has ended up being a little bit of that process. So I just want to take a moment of your time to explain sort of why we, how we got here, why we are looking so hard at this. And it's basically, we didn't really enforce this before. And since Monica's, and not, basically, we didn't, we absolutely did not enforce this before. And Monica's come in and she started citing people and it's all come to our office. And so I think over the last two years, it has been an increasing amount of our time to the point where it's probably about half of what I do right now are these different cases. So the timing is actually pretty good from our perspective. If you're gonna look at TPZ and talk about redwoods, if we could look at the entire code and make sure it's enforceable, that would really make my life a lot nicer. So again, I, a lot of these don't, actually, most of it, and I will point out if they do, they don't set forth any policy and pretty much, it's not a change to what's happening. It's just making it more clear about what we actually do because I want, if you're coming into town, I want you to be able to look at our code and know exactly what's expected of you and if you mess it up, exactly what you'll be paying. And I feel like that's really lacking right now. The first thing is actually a legal matter and it came up at a council meeting where I was not here. And I go to every single Planning Commission meeting and I see every application that comes through. So never seen this problem actually come up. However, if there was ever a circumstance where somebody's, a tree removal permit was denied and someone couldn't reasonably develop in their buildable area, that could end up looking a lot like a taking. And we just wanted to make sure that that was never going to happen. And there wasn't really anything in the code that protected against that. So we added that as a criteria when the Planning Commission's number five for Planning Commission to look at. That is one of the things, and it actually is lined up, Planning Commission shall grant the application if blah, 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 blah. And the fifth one says, you know, if it's required in order to allow reasonable development of the property. And we talked a lot about how to phrase that and I feel like we've come up with something that's pretty workable. Other thing, it was a pretty big one for us, heritage trees and the definition. I know we're changing the measurement, but the, probably the number one I'm having right now is that people have figured out that if they remove the tree on a Saturday and they grind up that stump, Sally and I go out there or they've cut it up and all that's left is a stump and they go, "Well, how you gonna measure it at four and a half feet, sorry?" And I've been standing out there and it's really, really frustrating. So we've been trying to get creative about, okay, well, the neighbors have pictures and, well, okay, but exactly, you know, how can you measure that, you don't know. So we took a really hard look at what could we do? And unfortunately, according to Sally, there isn't really any way to look at stump size and extrapolate what the trunk would have been at four and a half feet. There's just really no way to know that. So we built a few things in that said, okay, what is a reasonable stump size that would kind of equate to that? So Sally put that number in. If a neighbor has photographs, you can use circumstantial evidence. Similar trees in the area, you know, we can measure those and on Google Images, as I say, in Canopy. We wanted to build something like that that would allow us, the age of the tree is another one that would allow us to have that conversation. And we decided to make it a rebuttable presumption because it would make the violator come have a conversation with us. It's appealable to Planning Commission and then council because I think it's really important that we don't allow that loophole that somebody can grind it up and then we have nothing to go on. Penalties, there was a lot of potential inconsistency here and if you read through what we have right now, I find it to be pretty confusing on what your penalty might be, it might be five thousand dollars, it might be up to five thousand dollars or the value of the tree. So what we did is went ahead and put in a placeholder value. And again, this is where it would be policy. What we're saying is that if you damage or disturb a tree, the penalty is one-half the appraised value. And the appraisal is very easy, there's an industry standard, you plug in some numbers and it gives you something defensible, I feel comfortable with that. If that tree dies within a year, because that's the other thing, sometimes you damage it and it's dead within a year, we felt like that's kind of a removal. So we're saying that kicks it up to the higher penalty level, which is if you remove a tree illegally with no permit, it's two times the value. You guys are absolutely welcome to change those numbers, to discuss them. We just kind of wanted to put something in and that's sort of seemed like a good start. The process and appeal, I do not find the current code to be very clear. There's mention of civil and criminal processes, we do not ever use those. We've never used those, so I thought if we're not using them, we should probably take them out. We want to keep the process exactly as it currently is, it seems to be working, but I thought it might be nice to actually state what that is. And then, one of those, if you're gonna fix it, you might as well fix it all the way. I felt like there were some definitions that were either incorrect or missing that would create some loopholes, like for example, a good one is natural grade. I don't want to fight about if you pile up a bunch of dirt, six feet of dirt, and then try to measure four and a half feet above that, I don't want to fight about that. I'd rather just build it in. And this is the place where I looked at a lot of different jurisdictions to make sure there wasn't a great definition out there that we didn't have. Talked about some industry standards, so I think we added a little length there, but it's all things that are kind of relevant to my day-to-day life, so I thought they might be useful. And then I did take a look at other jurisdictions. We just recently had an event where we invited other local city attorneys, tossed it out there. And actually, what we found is that I got a couple of requests for what we're doing because people are looking to revise theirs as well. So I do think we're kind of a forerunner in this area. And I think that might be it, that's it, all right. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but thank you for taking a look at it. at it.
Do you want to ask a question? Kerry would like to ask a question. In a legal perspective, I know that, I don't know if we actually focused, the weekend, the person doing the removal on a weekend, it seems like you're focused on the tree. Is there a way to focus on illegal work on the weekend, have a sledgehammer for that, and then the illegal work is the removal of a tree and a sledgehammer for that? Because it just seems that the value of a tree, I'm sorry to some people, is not a lot, but the value to everybody else is great. Is there a way to really, because I looked through these penalties and to some people, those penalties don't seem that severe.
It's true. And there are people who look at that and they go, oh, two times? It's a, you know, $30,000 treat? Okay. And we've had people that happily have paid. We've been sort of, under our current code, it arguably gives us the right to double those penalties, and I've seen people not bat an eye, $50,000. And it isn't, just to be clear, it isn't just happening on Saturdays. It's happening on a Tuesday. It's happening, and sometimes people don't even notice. One we caught because the truck caught fire as the people were there removing a 200-year-old oak tree, and the neighbors ended up being upset, but I'm not sure anybody would have noticed if the truck hadn't caught fire.
Yeah, I mean, just the deeming an illegal one itself can create an additional number on top of the actual cost or replacement of the tree. Just because it's too many avenues to get around, you know?
Deeming, doing work without...
Doing work, period. Well, you know that if we have a guideline related to trees, right? We have guidelines for illegal trees. I knowingly, with knowledge, know that I have to do this, but I don't want to do this because I know it's a pain in the ass and it's going to cost me, or you may tell me not to remove it. So therefore, I do it. I don't care if it's during the week or the weekends, but I'm going to do it in a manner I'm going to try to get away with it. I get away with it. If I get caught, then there's a penalty for the tree, which is a minimal cost, but the actual illegal work.
Yeah.
Can there be the additional, in a legal perspective?
Yeah. Look, I've been doing this for 44 years and for 44 years, I've had problems with trees. And the real bottom line is, no matter what you do, there's a way around it. All you have to do is go kill the tree and sit back and watch and say, now it's dangerous, industry standard says I can remove my tree and I don't have to replace it two to one or three to one or whatever else. So you're trying to basically make the penalty fit the crime in the sense that, hey, you remove it, you pay a fine, and you replace it with multiples. And that gives you something back because otherwise, I'll just tell you, I can give you lots of worse stories about people in Monterey, and all they did was kill the tree and say, see you in six months, and exactly what they had now.
One of the things that we actually do require is if you are found in violation of removing a tree illegally, we do require you to go and get a retroactive permit for that, and that allows the conversation to happen about what you're going to replace it with, where you're going to put that. The neighbor might get involved. Planning commission is great at that, at getting the neighbor's opinion because a lot of times it's a screening issue.
With a jurisdiction like ours, we're different than most jurisdictions because of the streamlined permit process, we can get a building permit in 10 days. Therefore, time is money. People don't want to wait six months for a tree to die. Sorry. They want it to die now. And if they're going to wait six months, they're going to go, wait a minute, I'm just going to do the removal, it's going to be live. Therefore, that's why I think that if there's some legs in the actual rule of tree, the penalty, and you get caught, the hammer comes, it's, you get caught, boom, here it is, besides the value of the tree. I just didn't know there was another angle.
Kerry, very similar thoughts to Kerry. One thing I noticed is in this documents attached, those standards, there's a section on violation penalties and remedies.
Yeah.
It talks about injunctions, which actually would be quite effective.
Yes.
Have we ever done anything with that? Because the truth is, paying a flat amount of money to buy a tree, you know, the highest $20 million house is not anything. But if you enjoy that construction project for a while, then suddenly you've got to...
So we have actually, you may.
The issue, injunctions are always prospective. You can't have a retroactive injunction to stop them from cutting down a tree that they took down last week. Penalty-wise...
I'm sorry, let me just point back on that.
You mean injunction against their whole project?
Yeah, you can enjoy the project, you can enjoy removing the stump, you can enjoy... I mean, there's things that can be done.
There's court decisions that have been out there for a lot of years and say, you cannot withhold a permit, a building permit, which is ministerial. You can't withhold a building permit because they did something else wrong. It has to be something that you can hold the permit until they fix it.
So then why does this thing refer to injunctions? I mean, I'll treat the law because I talked about it. A civil action may be convinced to abate, enjoin, or otherwise compel the cessation, oh, I see, the cessation of violation, any provision of this chapter.
Yeah.
I understand, look, this is frustrating, this is more frustrating for us than for you because we look at trying to solve the problem and it's really, really difficult. One of the things that does happen, when we catch this, I mean, some guy recently was doing some work with little bridges in his backyard. Well, we stopped his project.
Yeah.
We stopped the project until they do a plan, the arborists come in, and time is money, and on a $50 million house, a week or two or three or a month, that's a lot of time to them. And so we do what we can within the parameters of remedying the tree problem. But we can't remedy the tree problem by stopping somebody from adding a bathroom to his house.
So is there, there's nothing other than finding an amount of money? You can't enjoin, you can't do anything? That strikes me as really counterintuitive that we can't do something.
Well, the problem with enjoining them is in almost every instance, I can't think of one where it's not this case, it's already done. If somebody comes to you and said, I want to do this...
I understand, but so the point is you can't, if they've cut down the tree, that's my question. If we walk in and they cut down the tree...
There's nothing to enjoin. There's no action that we can stop this unless we were to enjoin them from doing the rest of the trees, but...
Well, so we give them a permit predicated on them not doing that, right? Now they've done that, that feels like there's an injunction in there somewhere.
Well, actually, the tree part, the tree part that we've discovered is very often, in fact, I don't know if Sally would have a different look on this than me, but the ones where we've been involved, it's almost always the case where it's, this is preparatory work for doing the construction plan. They come in there like they're cleaning the site up and making it nice, and all of a sudden they start removing the big trees. Well, we don't find out about it until they remove the big trees. That's why our focus is penalizing the removal of the trees, and that process will stop them from starting construction. But other than that...
I'm starting to disagree. And I know you're not on the legal analysis, but I think Kerry's nailed it, which is, that's not a lot of money in the context of why. So we are in effect powerless is what I'm hearing. We find an amount of money that's not material to the project or what?
We make them add trees in, in multiples. So if you cut down one heritage tree, Sally might say, we need to put five more trees on, and in places that she selects, and that they may not want a tree, and it may be a problem for them. But beyond that, it's one of those things where the affluence of this community and the lack of caring about trees by some people, there's not much, to be honest, there's not much we can do to truly stop this. And we're open to suggestions from anybody on how to do this, but this is not unique here. It happens in Carmel, it happens in...
You know, I would say, if you're worried about the 2X, you can make it 3X, 4X. I do find people, when we start mentioning these numbers, are pretty quick to want to work with us. It's not, I would say it's less common that somebody goes, whatever, I don't care. That does happen. But, you know, when people start seeing $60,000, I mean, I think, our hope is that it's enough to incentivize you to come and work with the town and put those protections in place, and not so much that it incentivizes you to kill it in the dead of night and then try to get away with it that way. It can actually work when you sort of find a sweet spot.
Can I ask a line of questioning on that particular point? So if the building official has some discretion with respect to building permits and safety on the site and violations on the site and things like that, could the building official be a part of the process so that if they cut down a tree and there's an open building permit on the project for construction of a home or remodel of a home, when they cut down a tree they're not supposed to, everything stops on the project site until they have a staff-level meeting to address the tree issue, and then once that's solved, then the building permit continues?
Yeah, and that has in fact occurred, but we're talking about a matter of days and tying it, tying it to, tying it to what has occurred. And if we start messing around, the guy that's got a $50 million house, he's got a $49 million attorney somewhere that, a law firm that's willing to jump on this with their injunctions, and in the end, the tree's dead, and what are we going to do to bring about something positive? And we're hoping that the 2X, 3X, 4X, whatever the council feels is appropriate, will give us money to fund an arborist program that puts more trees, maybe in the park or someplace else where people will appreciate it.
I think that for the most part, most of our residents want to comply with our regulations.
Yeah.
True.
But what happens is, and if they know in advance, they're going to say to their contractor, we do want to avoid any potential delays, and I think that that impact is greater than the monetary. It's the, I can't get until Christmas that's really going to piss me off.
Yeah.
But if I got to pay a $20,000 worth of fine, write the check. And the delay has got more weight in telling a contractor or a sub or whoever not to do something. So we kind of have a, we should be just sent it to all of our committees to get signed off and take a look.
City attorney's only here two days a week.
It's true.
I've got a quick question. So in the presentation, you talked about the screening aspect. And the screening aspect, of course, is a very important one, not only with shrubberies, but if there were trees that act as the screening, I can understand why we want to have that included, but shouldn't that be in the building permit activity as opposed to something that we've now written into a heritage tree ordinance? It just doesn't seem like, it generally occurs during construction activity that somebody has to come and get a permit for, such as they're putting up a fence, such as they're doing a new building, and, you know, that's where we have problems. So I think that, for me, I just didn't see the logic of putting the screening stuff in the heritage tree ordinance as opposed to factoring it into our building ordinance.
There are times when people do, when all they want to do is remove a tree, and it stands alone, and they apply for that permit, and they aren't necessarily doing anything other than re-landscaping. And so in that instance, it is important to think about. It may not be tied to any other permits. We do see those.
Most landscaping, I would think, people, if they're doing major landscaping, they've come to the city and gotten a permit to do it.
Well, the other thing that we do see pretty regularly is somebody wants to develop the site and they don't know what's going to be allowed because they know that we have a process and that you can't just cut down whatever tree you want. So they come to planning commission and they say, okay, can we take down this tree? And they say, yeah, you know, what do you want to do? And they're like, we don't know, but our architect is trying to figure it out, and so we need to know, can that tree go or not? And so in those instances, maybe later there's a building permit, but it really is just a single question at the time.
And then, I didn't understand, there was some discussion in the actual word and not in the presentation, if you cut a limb off, that could be considered illegal. When people trim trees, they generally take a limb off here and trim a limb off there, provided that it's not 25%. So to finish, there was, I didn't see items with regards to diseased trees. We have a lot of elm trees in the area. When one starts getting infected with Dutch elm disease, the disease is transmitted through the roots of the trees. And so if you wait till the tree is 100% dead or 90% dead, your second tree that may be nearby is also now infected. So when you first see something, the tree doesn't have to be dead, but you need to have an arborist say, yes, it's Dutch elm disease, and then you need to get a permit to be able to build that down if you didn't see that.
I think that would be dying under E, dead or dangerous tree, and Sally and I have talked about this, we've had many, many conversations about that. And if something is diseased to the point where it's not going to make it and it's going to spread that disease, that absolutely would fall under that category.
It's not going to be to the point that you can readily see that it doesn't have leaves. It's the top level leaves in the middle of the summer when everything is thriving, they're dead at the top. And then it slowly comes down the tree, and by the time it gets to the bottom, it's done. And the trees next door to it are also done. I've seen rows of trees taken out very, very quickly because people didn't act fast enough to take the tree out.
Before Sally speaks, Mr. Mayor, I believe Councilmember Lewis needs to sign off.
No.
So I think she already did. I can finish my other items if you have...
So in that case, if somebody has applied for a tree removal and they stated that they think the tree has Dutch elm disease, and if I can't tell by just a visual assessment, that would require an arborist report to give their opinion. But there's, mostly, I don't think there's been, where there's been Dutch elm disease or something as severe as that, that I've not approved it.
Well, the way I read it, it had to be pretty far along. So maybe in wording, this can be just addressed to address that. If an arborist, and I agree with you, Sally, if you go out or we have a certified arborist in town and he comes and says, that tree has got Dutch elm disease, and it's somebody who has worked in the town and they're a certified arborist, then that should be satisfactory to take the tree out.
I think, yeah, a dead or dangerous tree, the dangers is so broad that I think I use dangerous, that could include diseased trees. So I think we just use it as a broader term.
We have a problem in that we're trying to put objective standards in a subjective world. But if you allow them to take down every tree that had a little branch on it, I have some cypress trees in my yard that would all go if that were the case during, because of the drought that we've had for a few years. But we're dealing with giving as much discretion to the arborist as we can without getting ourselves out there in legal loophole land.
Okay, well, I was reading it from what an average person would read that. There was this question that comes up on irrigation. So a tree dies, you go out and look at the tree, and when the tree was planted, it was, the drip line wasn't where you had your irrigation. Over time, the tree grew and the drip line expanded, and so it looked like you could then say, oh, well, you over irrigated it because even though you had a 10-foot thing, the drip line now is 20 feet. And so I just thought some of the things like that, plus the permit fee for taking down a dead tree and the obligation to plant again and then have this extenuating maintenance agreement, when somebody has just gone through having to take out a heritage tree, which probably could cost them $1,000 or more dollars, to have these extra expenses, I think it's...
Those are $19.72.
And I think that really, the permit fees, I think we've brought it up a number of times and we've had residents come here to this council and talk about, why do I have to pay a permit fee? I'm the one who suffered the loss. And I agree with them. And I think, I thought that we had agreed with that there wouldn't be a fee, but maybe I'm not. But it didn't say that. It says they have to get a fee, a permit, and obviously there's a fee associated with it.
So, yes, so you do have to get a permit no matter what, if it's a heritage tree, dead, dying, diseased, dangerous, because we want record of that permit, we want to know who the contractor is to make sure they're licensed. However, the policy is that still continues to be if the tree is dead, that there is no fee.
No fee.
But you still have to get the permit.
Okay, it'd be great if it was recommended. Okay. And then, you know, the question on the obligations then for the replanting and all that stuff. Most of the people who've lost a tree that they, a big tree that they really liked, it was giving them shade and things like that, they're going to want to do something, but then to hit them again with another fee, it says, and then creating additional work for yourself to go out and look at and say, whether or not I can get my $150 times three back, just seems a tad bit excessive.
I think what we were thinking on what has been a standard practice of requiring replacements when you remove any tree, is that if you don't do that over time, you could end up with fewer trees if people do not make that same choice. So that has always been the policy, and it is such a bucolic area that that has been the standard. So we didn't change that. If you want to remove that, you absolutely can. It would be...
What I'm saying with regards to a dead tree...
Yeah, you can require, I mean, we can leave that in just for an illegal removal, and if you want to remove that requirement for a dead and dangerous tree, you could. It's just not what has been done and we didn't want to change that.
I'm not just cynical, but I have a lot of experience with trees, and I will tell you, if you reward people for having dead trees, a lot of trees that would have not been removed will all of a sudden die. And I can give you 50 ways to kill a tree not to paraphrase, silently go...
Yeah, the other element there, and I do see a lot of this, are very upset neighbors, where you might have a tree in your backyard that is super relevant to somebody else, maybe their entire property looks out on it, and this gives an opportunity and... And, and here, unlike a lot of other places, we really take into account, you know, the neighbors will come and talk at the planning commission meeting about, yeah, I looked at that tree. Okay, well, you're going to replace it with what and where are you going to put it? Put it in a, you know, and, and there really is this negotiation that takes place where they end up being happy as well, so.
And for, for fees, we don't usually codify no fee or amount of fee into an ordinance. We put that into our fee resolution.
Yeah, it's always referenced still, so.
So that's where the no fee part comes in.
Well, I thought that there was a lot of things associated with fees that I thought we were trying to clean up in this, which I think you've done a pretty good job on, Jen, but there were still a lot of, at the discretion of this person or that person. And they made up, this person or that person may not make the same judgment even in identical circumstances the same way each time.
I think you're missing the distinction between a fee and a penalty. The penalty is what we're, I think that's what Mike was talking about. The penalty has to be something that makes an even a foot person stop to take notice. And, and we want to do that. At the same time, we don't want to penalize somebody that has a legitimate tree that died because of natural causes. And strangely enough, the arborist is really good at making that distinction. You know, trees don't usually just really quickly just die. There's usually a period of decline and then they die. But we, the fee is to cover the cost of the arborist going out and looking at it and the other staff people reviewing it. That's what the fee component is. That's why it's looked at and it has to be justified and it's in the, it's in the field of resolution, excuse me.
Resolution.
But this, what we're talking about strengthening is the penalty. That's the two X, three X, four X, whatever the council feels is an appropriate law.
I've got no problem with, with, if somebody goes in, like some construction companies have been stated to do, to go in and intentionally and deliberately they get a tree that they know they're getting not approval for, we need to have some discretion. I'm talking about the ones that aren't those.
I wanted to speak on two, two of your points, is that I feel the replacements are good even for dangerous trees because we're getting a lot of these older sites, the trees that haven't been maintained. And so ten trees are getting removed. And so at the end of the construction project, I feel the town would want those sites to be reforested again. And so that's where we get them with the replacements. And so I think that's a good thing. Oh, and the fence, the fence?
No, I'm just asking. Go ahead, Sally.
You had, you had, you had a comment about the good neighbor fence. So the town only regulates the front fence of the property, not any of the side fences. So there's no permits required for those. So in a lot of cases, I'm not involved in the good neighbor fences unless usually there's a tree issue with the, where the fence is located, property line, survey issues. So it's hard for me to regulate good neighbor fences. So I was technically thinking the five times would be for the front fence of the lot.
Because there are people that live on the.
I mean, you, you still can't damage a heritage tree on your property, but I don't know, I, I, I'm not, I'm not brought in aware of it because there's no permit required for the good neighbor fences.
Wait a minute. So I've got a question.
Yeah.
So are you saying that this ordinance doesn't prohibit putting a fence within one X the diameter of a heritage tree if that is a side fence rather than a front fence?
I'm saying that if, if they're putting that fence there and it's damaging the tree, yes, and, and I found out that it's damaging, then the ordinance would kick in. But I don't know where they're putting the fence, if it's on the property line. I don't know any of the details as it doesn't go through the building department.
A neighbor would have to complain for the town to know about it.
Unless the fence triggers a building repair.
But if you, to put in a good neighbor fence requires a permit?
No.
Yeah.
Only the front fence of the lot. None of the side fences, all of the side fences are good neighbor fences, yes.
But the activity is still prohibited if you are.
You can put a good neighbor fence right next to a heritage tree as long as it doesn't damage.
You can't disturb or damage within the TPZ.
Say that again?
You can't disturb or damage, and there's a definition of what activities would trigger that within the TPZ without permission. So if you, in my interpretation, if you, and Sally was cool with it, wanted to build a sort of right above grade fence and there were no posts going in, no roots are being touched, I don't think that would count as disturbing or damaging unless it was some weird kind of tree that.
Not at all. So.
So we're talking about trenching or.
I have a lot of language changes to this ordinance.
Great.
And I, I would, I'm going to recommend when we aren't in questions that we set up a subcommittee to address some of those. But this is a perfect example of where the language needs to be clear because right now it says fence. It doesn't say front fence. And someone reading this would have no idea it doesn't include fences all the way around their property. Now, that may be clear to you, but I'm assuming that we're going to have residents that read this provision and maybe councilmembers. And it would be good for us to be able to understand what is being said. So that's just one example. I'm going to give you, I have a couple of questions and I will give you a couple of other examples of exactly this issue. And I'm not as concerned about the penalties not being big enough because I, I guess, I think when you're building a house, you have a different attitude towards costs than after you are in a house and you're making changes on that property. But, I mean, the, you know, two X penalty is easily fifty thousand dollars for any heritage tree.
Yeah.
And maybe twice that. And that, for anybody not, maybe, maybe somebody guilty doesn't care about that, but I, I'm not that concerned with them. I think the recommendations are reasonable. Where I have real heartburn are some of the definitions because, for example, cutting includes the removal of a branch, any branch, or foliage. So I have several oak trees. I often remove little branches that grow into the paths that walk throughout my property. And this would, if you read the letter of the language here, it would say that removal of any branch or foliage from a heritage tree is damage and damage, no person will damage a heritage tree, blah, 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 each and without a permit.
Was that a thing?
Obviously, if, nobody's getting a permit to remove a, you know, three-inch piece of foliage that's sticking into a walking path.
And maybe I'm reading it differently. I think it was if you cut twenty-five percent at one time.
There is that language under irreparable damage.
Uh, under excessive pruning as well.
I'm just saying there needs to be some, some clarity in here, like cutting needs to be, include the same language that's included in injury, which says that is likely to cause death or permanent damage.
Yep.
That's not included. Another example, any screwing into a tree. Well, there can be little tiny screws that are put up when someone puts lighting in a tree. This would prohibit anyone from putting lighting.
Technically, we don't allow uplighting.
Well, downlighting, any kind of lighting, it doesn't matter.
Christmas light.
But there, there, I mean, if, people are going, I mean, we're trying, we're, we're, I think the language in general is excellent compared to what we have. I really agree with the purposes. I just think that there's some specifics that need help. This is why I would recommend a subcommittee to deal with that.
Yeah. Would you like that birdhouse to put in a tree? That was me if you didn't put that in there.
I don't think we put birdhouses. I think we put treehouses.
Treehouses.
And that are fully connected to a trunk.
Mailboxes.
You better secure it somehow.
I think we were keeping it broad because it's still up to my description. Obviously, a birdhouse is not going to kill the tree.
Anything.
But there might be an instance where there's a lot of screws, screwing on, like a major treehouse, which I have seen and has killed the tree.
So.
And so I think we were trying to keep it broad.
I'm going to give you another example of where I think there needs to be help. The definition of, under state tree care license and, what else was it? Person. Yeah, anybody, so the homeowner is responsible under this ordinance for anyone who comes in and does anything to the property. I think this is under the definition of per, person. But there are some instances where other than the homeowner have an easement to go in and trim trees. Each and he does it all the time, wherever there are wire, wherever there are.
They're outside the purview of this entire.
They are not outside the purview of the language. The language doesn't put them outside the purview.
We can create an exception for.
So that's an example of where we, because we all know that if you don't monitor them, they're going to butcher your trees.
Yes, our thinking was just that they're not subject to this chapter. It doesn't apply to them in general because they don't have to comply with it. So they technically, I'm happy to.
Is your person is any owner having property and property owners are liable under.
I am happy to make it clear. They just aren't subject to the, the law in the same way. So we just, we wouldn't be looking at this. But I can.
That's what I'm saying.
Carve it out. We can do that.
And make it clear and to take out some of the things that maybe you're written in by birdhouses.
So final question I have for you.
Yep.
Under the definition of presumed heritage tree, which again, I think this is a really helpful addition because you're left with a stump when someone's removed a tree.
Or not even a stump.
But under this definition, it, it says a tree is a native, the, the definition of a presumed heritage tree includes if the tree is a native oak with a minimum of seventy-five years.
Yep.
The tree is a redwood with a minimum of thirty years. The tree is any other species with a minimum of forty-five years.
Yep.
Why do we undervalue the oaks to make them a minimum of seventy-five?
This is all based on the growth rate of the trees. Obviously, a redwood grows a lot faster than an oak tree. And so it's the diameter times the growth rate of the tree and the growth rate is, is an industry standard or at least an estimate, estimate of that type of species. And so redwoods grow pretty fast. So at thirty years, there technically would be a heritage tree. As an oak, takes a lot longer to grow. So this is all based, these are all based on a fifteen-inch diameter sized tree.
It does seem a little, I had that same question where I went, wait a minute, that takes seventy-five years to replicate. Why aren't we protecting it? But we're protecting it at thirty years. But that is just working backwards from our current size.
We don't want it to be, we, we want, we want it to be defensible. So if we're saying a really low number, then they could come back and say.
It's just a question.
Yeah, yeah. We want it to be defensible. So we're a little more conservative, so, yeah.
Don't be defensive.
No, it's not defensive.
That works. I think Councilmember Lempers wants to jump in. I was just going to suggest that the council take up the vice mayor on his suggestion. A subcommittee could be appointed by the mayor at any point because you're not going to legislate through this entire ordinance this evening and there are other things on the agenda.
Yeah. I do have some questions. I've been just waiting. I did feel it's okay. And you don't have any long answers, okay? And, and this is genuinely curious questions. For example, you guys concluded redwood trees should not be included in heritage tree ordinance. Could you just explain to me why? What's the short answer to why redwood trees shouldn't be in that?
That was actually me.
Oh, it wasn't you. It was you, okay.
The, the planning commission, if you recall, the chair of the planning commission really wanted redwood trees into the ordinance. And when you had the joint meeting, the chair was very emphatic about it. And the council, three to two, I believe, or four to one or something like that, included them. And then afterwards, I had some follow-up conversations and it was, oh, why did we do that? We just really want some data on whether we should or shouldn't. So I crafted an alternative that could be presented to the council for that to say, why don't we just count them for a year or six months or whatever the timeframe is and come back?
Ah, okay. I wish I had known that. That, that's a data point I would like to add. I assume I see stuff as a staff recommendation and not, pardon the phrase, but a political response to.
Yeah. The, the, the response at the time we did this was there maybe one or two trees per year, but we did, we don't track them. So we had no idea what we were creating as a variable.
My, my, sort of, Sam, this follows on to that is, counting was a great idea. Is there a reason that all heritage trees are measured at the same fifteen, fifteen point two inches or whatever? For example, compromised redwoods might have been preserved bigger ones than, you know, whatever, eighteen or twenty or whatever, some number.
I think, well, I, I can't speak on twenty years ago, but I think they copied a lot of the ordinance from Palo Alto. And also they just wanted it to be easy for, just easy, fifteen inches heritage tree.
Okay. Well, is there a recommendation based on that comment that we would change that or are we going to continue to follow Palo Alto's footsteps?
There was discussion about changing it in some of the subcommittees and making oaks, a lot of places have oaks as a smaller diameter because they're so important. But it was a lot of discussions on not doing that. So we haven't included that at this point.
An overarching point, which is, I think that our city attorney said that one of the things we're doing is we're investing a lot of discretion in our town arborists. We're a great town arborist. That's a wonderful thing. It makes me a little uncomfortable when an individual can sign off and act with discretion that is tens of thousands of dollars. And I'm just wondering, can we build it, have we built in a process where there's some check? Does anybody who's read about college admissions lately or anything else really like this? You know, it's nice to have checks on people. I apologize for mentioning that. That's sort of all about you. I think it's a good thing for an institution.
I, I apologize for stating that comment the way I did. Here, here is, when, when I started with the staff before Jen even was involved with the staff, and the first thing I said was, what we need to do is take out as much discretion as possible and in its place, put in objective standards, which I think they've done a remarkable job of doing. But you can't do it all that way. It's so.
That's not where I'm going. My point is.
Yeah, yeah. So the process.
One person here, I think, who can say thirty thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars worth zero, is that correct?
Well, it would be based on an industry.
There wouldn't be any zero, but yes. So basically, I just want to give you just a quick, so it's a, it's one workshop, it's one worksheet, one worksheet. I plug in the species rating, diameter, some other things. And so that always goes to Monica and that always goes to the resident so they can see my work and they can calculate it themselves. So it's very transparent.
If there's a disagreement.
So Monica's seeing it.
Yeah.
I see my point. Anytime one person is making a decision, because the resident is the one who's going to be happy with zero, right?
Yeah.
So you're not going to complain there. So you want someone in the town, another set of eyes to look at. Again, it's, I have no, this is not, I apologize.
Well, there's not another arborist in town, so.
It's just a.
Yeah, we, we wanted to make sure that there was due process and that it had a, a process by which if you were not okay with that. So it goes to the planning commission and then to the council. There is a, a, any staff level decision is appealable.
If almost every one of these situations, they hired their own arborist to come in and.
Yeah. And then they have a conversation, but it goes to planning commission and they go to council.
There is a check on it. There is a check. So thank you, thank you.
And that applies to everyone.
And my last question, I should shut up. I promise I'll shut up because a whole bunch of trees have fallen in the last three weeks to the month, you know, with the rain and everything else. Please, some big areas trees have taken out a lot of stuff. Is there anything we should have learned from that that's relevant here?
That's a good question. Every winter, a lot of oak trees fall, so this is not.
This is unusual, I think. I mean, you might know that.
It's about the same, I think it's about the same. I mean, I don't get, I don't get word of every tree that's fallen, but most people tell me just so I have their information, even if it's on their private property. I mean, oak root fungus, always. Water, overwatering your oak tree, which is why we put that as a thing of you, of damaging your tree. Those are the two main reasons they're falling over. There's no roots underground because people overwater them or put them in places like near walls, CME walls, and they've lost their roots and they've, they've gone to the point
To when it's finally done. Our trees are suffering after our long drought and then now the rain. And I do think it is the excavation and the roots that are getting cut. And with all this rain, they're just falling over. They just can't, there's nothing to hang on. So we, my focus is trying to preserve the roots. You know, what we see are the beautiful branches and everything up above ground, but it's those roots in the soil that are gonna keep the trees alive. And that's why that tree protection zone is so important in protecting what's around the tree. So I thank you for your efforts and I look forward to when it's done.
Any other public comment on inheritance tree ordinance? Seeing none of them, we'll close public comments. And I think we have our direction. We'll appoint a subcommittee to work with staff.
The mayor will appoint a net hop committee.
Correct, the mayor will appoint the net hop committee.
He knows how to do that.
Yes.
He says "we."
I meant "we."
It was a word.
We can still run a leisure.
And a mayor award, yeah.
Got it, okay. Number eighteen, public safety security cameras. Leave us, we shall. Where's Keith?
We will set data for him.
It wasn't important enough. He's with all the cameras.
We can find out exactly where he is. Good.
All right. Thank you for hearing this presentation tonight. My goal is to be able to provide you with a better understanding of ALPR and also public safety cameras. And I think it's just important to note that there is a distinction between the two. How they're used and the different options available, because there are several options available. And I think it's important to hear, it's important to note that for the ALPR, there's two separate databases. There's one through NICRIC, the Northern California Regional Information Center database. And I'll explain the pros and cons of that. But there's also an avenue for a private company database, and I'll talk about that as well. So how can LPR make a difference? Well, generally speaking, criminals that commit crimes here, they don't walk here. Atherton's unique, there's no businesses, there's no places to hang out. There's no places to loiter. And when people do, we tend to know about it because our residents will call. If you're not coming here to go to school and you're not living here or you're not passing through, then really, there's no reason, there's no reason to come here. Every, occasionally for burglaries, they will ride a bike, but we've found that in many instances, even if they are on a bike or if they do come in on foot, a lot of times they're getting picked up by vehicles. The reason you have to understand is that when people are committing these crimes, they wanna be efficient. They don't want attention to come to themselves. And in a town like Atherton, it's very easy to have attention come to yourself.
Joe?
Yeah. And you'll see down on the bottom slide there, I don't wanna read off all the slides, but there's two very important things on here. Having, having LPR gives us an extra set of eyes. While we do have one mobile LPR now in the car, that LPR is reliant on where that car is at the time. So having an extra safe, extra set of, of, we'll call them eyes and strategically placed places within the town would definitely be a benefit. And with Atherton fiber in town, if you're familiar with the camera project, one of the toughest parts about the camera project at just surveillance cameras at the park was finding power. And this, that would help to alleviate that with the connections already set up. So what does ALPR do? Well, it helps us find stolen vehicles, and I'm talking through the NICRIC database. Helps us find stolen vehicles, helps us find people. You'll occasionally get notifications through various channels for amber alert, for silver alerts. So that's missing children, missing elderly. And when those folks are attached in some sort of way to a vehicle, it's just another avenue to help find them. This is just repetitive, I can't emphasize enough, that having the extra set of eyes through town. You also have to remember that unfortunately, when crimes occur, a lot of times we find out about them after the fact. And being able to go back and get the information, since crimes have occurred previously, and how it works is this, is you might get a, say for instance, we just had a big meeting with some of the other agencies about all the burglaries we've been having. So you take a burglary from another, from another jurisdiction, and maybe they were fortunate enough to get a license plate that maybe we didn't get from one of our burglaries. And if, and if an agency had LPR or access to an LPR database, you could actually use that license plate and see, hey, well, did that pass by any of our cameras? And if it did, at what date and what time? For some of the other cities that have tried to implement ALPR, there's obviously, there are some concerns in the community. And as you can see here, ALPR doesn't provide us with specific person information. It's designed to capture license plates. So while it will capture a license plate and log the date and time and the location where the, where the information was captured, it doesn't, it doesn't provide us with person information. However, once we do get that license plate, we do have another system called CLETS that allows us to access person information so we can find out in the commission of a crime who was driving the vehicle associated with that. It allows us to follow leads. It's also important to understand that the ALPR system is restricted to law enforcement personnel with a specific law enforcement purpose. You have to have a case number, you have to have an incident number, you have to have a specific law enforcement reason for why you'd be looking through the system. And to give you a broader picture, so there's federal, state, local, and even tribal law enforcement that are specifically signed to the NICRIC region that meet the vetting criteria, that agree to the NICRIC policies, have a need-to-know, have a right-to-know, have a case number in a specific criminal case to look into the system or for making specific individual inquiries. Access to LPR, the Atherton Police Department, that would be the Atherton Police employees, Atherton Police personnel, the dispatchers and the officers. But again, you have to have a lawful purpose, just like we have for CLETS that we already have in our system for the California Law Enforcement Telecommunication System. Even there, if you wanna run a driver's license or a plate, you have to have a need-to-know, you have to have a right-to-know. So what is a lawful purpose? Locating stolen or wanted vehicles, and that's one of the benefits that you get with the NICRIC system. That's one of the pros, is that there's something called a hot sheet that law enforcement agencies are given. And a hot sheet just means, these are the list of vehicles that are currently, that are currently stolen. And they'll give us that list. It helps to locate suspects, criminal investigations, arrest warrants, wanted people. I already talked about amber and silver alerts. Public safety surveillance cameras, who has access to the cameras? Again, Atherton PD personnel, and it's monitored 24/7 by our dispatchers. I think y'all currently know, right now, we have 22 cameras. I believe our program, program started back in 2005 and it's just gotten a little bigger since. We have 12 cameras at the police department and in various places and around the town, the town government center, and then we have 10 over at the park, at various locations at the park. So success stories? I believe your copy, my apologies for the typo, it said 2014 residential burglary. This is 2015 residential burglary. In summary, we had a, we had a burglary just off the El Camino, on one of the side streets. A victim's credit card was used not long thereafter at the Redwood City Target. If you've never seen the Redwood City Target Surveillance System, it, like I have freckles on my face, you may not be able to see them from here, but the cameras will see the freckles on my face, that's how good the cameras are. So their cameras were able to, they homed in on these suspects, when the suspects, the suspects used the credit card to try to buy some gaming equipment. They got a little greedy, tried to buy some more gaming equipment. Clerk was like, hey, you guys got some ID? Long story short, they ended up taking this stuff, they weren't totally ID'd, they weren't required to, to go to the, to provide the ID. It didn't, it didn't prevent them from getting what they wanted. They exited, the cameras followed them. The clerk suspected that these folks were up to no good, actually got them on camera, I believe doing a window smash to a vehicle in the parking lot. The best thing was that it actually captured, it got video of the license plate, and it got pretty good video of the suspects themselves. So where we come in, we're able to get that information from, from Target. We enter the vehicle in as a, as being wanted for a felony. And even though these are bullet points and I'm going down it like this, this didn't all happen right away. This is over a period of a few days. And so after we get the video, we send out, we send out the images that we have to other law enforcement agencies. And we're told, okay, we recognize possibly some of these people that are involved with a, with a violent criminal gang out of the East Bay, and this is what they do, they, they do burglaries in this fashion. They go and they try to use the credit cards. So with that being said, the possibility that we were able to enter the license plate as a, as a vehicle wanted for the commission of a felony and an officer's safety vehicle, it's just other officers pursuing these folks if they kept, if they caught up with it, might actually just, just use it. It's just precautionary measure. So we contacted another law enforcement agency who did have access to LPR because we were able to get a license plate. We gave that to them. Long story short, they say, hey, we got some hits on this vehicle in and around the San Francisco area. So a short time after that, Daly City PD is in the area and said, hey, we see this vehicle. And they literally, they leave for a couple minutes, they come back, the vehicle's gone. But by this time, the units in the area near San Francisco are aware of this vehicle and aware of the license plate. CHP stops the vehicle, they end up finding stolen property in the vehicle. Believe it was, it was two cuff links. Were able to send officers down there, identify the property, check it with the resident, is this yours? Yes, it is. So possession of stolen property, and it was a win-win. Piedmont PD, and I should just add, and I think you get the picture, but we would not have been able to solve that crime without the use of all the tools necessary, including ALPR and including the surveillance video that we got from Target. Shows you the value of surveillance video. Piedmont PD, Chief McCully and I took a trip to Piedmont. They, they talked about their system, they talked about their successes with this system. They had in January of 2018, a home invasion robbery. You know, we talk about burglaries, but a home invasion robbery, I mean, that's, that's, that's no bueno. Suspects were wearing, excuse me, three armed suspects approached the victims, forced them into a house. And you can actually see a lot of this video. You can actually see surveillance cameras from the area, from the house and from next door that captured a lot of this on video, which was very helpful. They have ALPR cameras that provided additional links to the suspect vehicle, and Oakland PD located the vehicle and it was able to provide them with information that led to, to some arrests. And the video that they got was actually provided from a neighbor's video. It wasn't a, a town-owned video. Yeah. You could, you could just go ahead and skip. Yeah. So we're gonna show a new story of exactly what I was talking about with, with Piedmont. And we'll send you the link to that. So here's some of the metrics involved with their program. They have 39 fixed ALPR cameras covering 15 intersections. And you can see, you can see the success that they've had.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry about that. There we go. I mean, you can look and see that it's, that it's definitely been beneficial. They've had this program since 2014. And again, this is with the, this is with a system based in, with NICRIC. And just being able to get leads in that many cases that you didn't have prior to is, is worth a lot. It's really a good investigative tool. Maintaining records, so most records are maintained for 12 months. If it's connected to a criminal investigation, it can be retained for five years. That's just per federal regulations. That's, that's the way it is now with our current cameras, camera system for our policy. So a couple more things is, you gotta ask the question, is fixed ALPR video surveillance right for Atherton? Well, it, it has worked in the past. I have no doubts it would work in the future. Criminals talk. It's just, it's just a fact of how it is. Usually what happens is, is we figure out a way to catch them, they figure out a way how not to get caught by the method we just thought of. And it's, and it's a constant, it's a constant chase to see who's in front. But when somebody gets convicted of a crime, it's no secret because they do talk, because they don't wanna get caught again. And word spreads. So it's like that, it's like that alarm sign that you have in your front yard that says beware of dog, or that, well, the notice that says beware of dog or the Atherton alarm sign you have on there. And really, the goal of those things are to get the burglar that's coming in to say, you know what, I don't wanna hit that house. And if word were to spread that we did have something like an LPR to be able to catch people even after the fact, word spreads, and which is really what we want. Before we go into the questions, I, I did mention that there is a, you have the NICRIC database, but you also have, you also have a private system. And I won't mention the name of the company, but there is a company, it's a private, it's a private company. And they charge, it's, it's $2,000 per year, per camera for, for ALPR. And probably less if the town were to purchase 10 or more. Advantages of this type of company? There's no public records implications, the residents own the data. There's no maintenance headache for the town, no expertise required by town staff, the data is stored in the cloud, removes the Big Brother stigma from, from the conversation because it's part of the conversation when you talk about ALPR. And it also has the ability for residents to mark their own vehicles as belonging to a resident. So basically, if I'm at my house and I have my own ALPR, I can let, I can let the police know, hey, these four cars belong here. Anything, anything other than that extra, you may wanna look into. Disadvantages? There's no apparent way to upload to NICRIC. So we won't know right away if there's a stolen vehicle. We're gonna have to do some, some work on our end. But what happens is, how this system works is if we do get a license plate, whether it's from another agency or, or a resident was able to, to write one down, somehow we got one, we could actually, if the resident allowed us, we could run it through their system. Another disadvantage, it would require neighborhoods to organize. Perhaps, you know, leveraging the ADAP zones that we currently have. And you know, just with ADAP, it's tough enough to get people to get involved with that. So it's just, it's just another challenge. And then being that it's a private company, you know, there's the risk they could go out of business and you could lose the data. So those are things to consider. And so I had mentioned $2,000 per year, per camera. Piedmont's camera system, they have 33 cameras, 15 intersections. The ALPR cameras were $15,000, $50,000 apiece? 15, $15,000 apiece. And they said that they had a minimum of two cameras at each intersection, sometimes three, but a minimum of two. And that does not include $5,000 for the infrastructure to actually put them up. So you're looking at 35,000 minimum per intersection, and that was back in 2014 when they put those in. So those are, those are some things to consider. In terms of our cameras that we already have at the park, those cameras for installation, everything, about $3,500 per camera ballpark. So things for you to consider. Hopefully, giving you a little bit better insight on, on the ALPR and the, and the camera system and the possibilities, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Joe, is that, yeah, I do, actually, just to travel. Pretty common that criminals steal cars. So the value of this indicator of stolen car is a, is a pretty big, you know, plus because often they steal a car, come over, do crimes. That's LPR?
Yeah, it, that's a great question. So if we had LPR based through the NICRIC for what I think you're saying is if a stolen car came into town, we would know about it. If it crossed through one of those cameras that was connected to the NICRIC camera, we would know.
If it was reported as stolen.
If it was already reported as stolen, yes.
I have something to answer.
Right now, just a couple of questions. I, I see a, a privacy difference between license plate readers and camera, the safety cameras, security cameras. And NICRIC, which is Northern Californian, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So it, license plate readers scan automatically and every night that information goes to the Northern California Intelligence Center?
Correct.
And I guess my, my questions are, what limitations are there on that? You said federal government doesn't get it, yet individual agencies can pay for specific reasons, right? They just don't get a download?
Correct, yeah, you gotta have a specific reason. Gotta have a specific plate. You know, hey, was, was this car that we got a license plate to in, you know, we had a burglary, is it, was it on, what, what streets do you show it on at this date and time? For instance, if we were gonna, if we were gonna use the system, we'd need specific information. You just can't go on a fishing expedition looking for places, it's just too much.
And I think you're helpful, so Mike, can I go to a comment? Sure. I think you're helpful, I do think it makes sense to me, they're helpful. I am concerned that they do feel to me like they violated digital privacies at some level and that, and I have preference in some ways for a, a security camera, safety camera. We have control over our data preservation, everything else policy. But in San Diego, they keep it for five days, they keep their records for five days, which makes it very difficult for public records requests or anything to come in that would cause, you know, somebody wants to know where Carrie was last Tuesday night from figuring it out, these networks' information.
That question went to the California Supreme Court. The only issue they really addressed before they sent it back to the lower court to answer some other questions was it's not disposable in the Public Records Act request.
Public safety cameras or ALPR?
ALPR, sure.
I'm talking about public safety camera. So Mike, what I've heard, I've heard numerous divorce, you know, cases and other things where people are suddenly, they're looking for, you know, where was this individual? Do you get pictures of this individual? Which, I'm not sure that's the role of Atherton, right, and that kind of information? You know, we don't need to. But I do think they're helpful, I see a distinction between the two. I'm more comfortable with the public safety cameras, because we have more control over, over who sees that and, and, you know, we're able to obtain it more. I don't know how, if they're less helpful to you or not. It sounds like they are because they're not coordinated with an LPR, you know, they're not coordinated this anymore. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Just, can I ask a question since you mentioned it? Not a quality issue related, I mean, the cameras is often a quality issue and the upgrading of equipment can be pretty cumbersome and costly to a jurisdiction. There is no cost factor, I mean, LPRs are, how difficult is it to read a license plate? It's, you know, technology X, picture of a front license plate sends it to the system. So there's really not a lot of maintenance to an LPR component that there is with the digital, the, the camera component, which I looked into a few years ago. So that's just.
Okay.
Two bits.
How many, have you targeted where you would wanna put the ALPRs? And how many they would be? And I'm not, that's the question, and then I, I don't even know where you're targeting putting them.
Right.
But I would like to know how many.
So that's something we'd have to figure it out. And that's where the research comes in. And just keeping cost in mind, it's where are the most effective places to put them in town? And when you look at our choke points, there are certain areas, and I'll name a couple of them. You know, there's only, there's certain areas where there's one way in and there's one way out. We know that there's a 280 corridor off of Alameda. We know that Marsh Road brings folks in from there. So those are the type of avenues, this is just the highly traveled intersections that we would be looking to do.
So, I've got a comment slash question. So in talking to other people in jurisdictions, specifically up north, you know, it turns out that most of the people that have come to do something have stolen a car. They come in, they perpetrate whatever they're going to do, and then they get picked up and then they leave that stolen car. Especially places up north where they'll steal the cars out of the San Francisco airport. The car will not get notified, you know, and they get in and get out. And so license plate readers, if, if they did that, stole the car that day and then did what they were gonna go do and then left and then transferred to a private car outside of town, the Northern California license plate reader would not pick up that because it hadn't been reported, number one. And number two, even if it had been reported, it wouldn't get uploaded and back downloaded that until 24 hours, is that, did I understand?
You know, approximately, it's, it's not foolproof and it relies on you having some sort of information. Absent of the car being, I wanna say registered, but being officially reported as stolen, yes, it won't pick that up. But what we do get is if we do get a license plate from somebody else and we're, and we're able to check and see if that license plate came through. For instance, we have an agency, we'll just say up north, that said, hey, we got a plate from a vehicle that we believe was involved in a residential burglary. So we're able to take that license plate, run it through our system and say, hey, was this, did the plate ever come through any of our cameras? And if so, on, on what date and time, and it'll give us that information.
All right. So, I mean, we have the license plate reader in one of our cars currently.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I'm in favor of expanding that. I think that the cameras might be better suited to the regional community things. That's just my opinion. But I didn't see a whole lot of write-up on the, the cameras in the report. So I assume that when you come back with a recommendation of what you guys are thinking of, that we'll have a description, a better description on both and, and what the costs are.
Absolutely.
And the risks, because I, I did notice that a public company could go out of business and there could be a breach of the information in the public company where maybe not so much, more of a regional control. I mean, I'm not gonna say the government doesn't, of course, because they do. But, you know, a public company, a private company might have one a little bit easier depending on their technology.
And I, and I think those are good comments. And I ju, I think, everyone should just understand though that with these license plate readers, they are designed to capture plates in the exterior vehicles. So the, the volumes of information in there are going to have just that. They're gonna have license plates in there. Yeah.
Okay. Good. No more comments? Yeah. Well, we'll see if you have any, any input from the public, please, please go up.
I have a couple of questions. I'll have a baby. Can you just come over? I have a microphone that you have recorded. Can I, wait, I have a couple of questions. Um, Commander Wade, wait, I have a couple of questions for you and then I, I have a statement. So can I ask the question before you start the three minutes?
Okay.
Okay.
And you are?
I'm Christine Curry, a sixteen-year Atherton resident. I live at three thirty-seven Fletcher Drive. I know, and I, I came because I didn't know anything about this agenda item I saw in the Almanac today, this afternoon. And I was concerned enough to drop everything and come. Um, so my question, and, and by the way, thank you for the opportunity to speak and, um, also Commander Wade. And I, um, would appreciate being able to, to say what I wanted to say, but first I wanted to ask a couple of questions about your presentation.
Sure.
You mentioned that, uh, the ALPR system does not share vehicle information with private sector companies. But if we use this private company, then they would have that information. In other words, you're offering two options. One is the regional system, the NICS RIC, that this other company would have that access.
And, and well, that would be something that, that a resident got privately. And they would choose to share that information with us. This would be something that the, the town could purchase it for a place like the Park?
No, I'm, but I'm talking about the, um, the ALPR system?
The question she's asking is a very simple and a good one. If we use an outside vendor to store the data, is that acceptable by the public? And the answer is no.
But is it, but it's accessible by the company, the company has that.
By the company, but it's like the same way the FBI and other agencies use outside entities to store data, the cloud. There are tons and tons and tons of this stuff that's, that's encrypted and stored and it's only, it's only, in this case, it's just like the parking tickets. There's lots of companies that do those, but they're not accessible, legally not accessible to anybody except the, the police agency that put the data there.
But their system could be hacked and they would not have the oversight of that company that you would have perhaps with the public, the NICRIP. I also wanted to know, you said that the NICRIP or the system does not transfer data to the federal government. Do they have access to the system? As an example, in our county, um, we all, we don't give any information to ICE or, or, um, any of the federal agencies about arrest records, but they have access to the same system. ICE and, and Customs and Border Patrol have access to that. Do they have access to the NICRIP and the CLS, the CLS system?
I don't know of any specific federal entities that do, but NICRIP does require that for all users of their LPR data that you adhere to their, that you adhere, adhere to their policies. And that means that you have to have a need to know, a right to know, a case number associated.
So it could be, it could be that they have access to the information that's collected by our system too, if we're part of that system. Anyone who's participating in it. What I wanted to say is I, I really understand that Atherton residents are concerned about all the burglaries. And I know you guys have been working really hard trying to solve them. I saw the public meetings, I was out of town, I'm not able to attend. Four of the burglaries have happened in my neighborhood, which I appreciate getting the alerts about. And I am, share the community's concern. But I also personally, I don't want to be surveyed. I don't want you to capture my, my car license number every time I'm coming and going in Atherton. I don't want you putting, and I, and I never break the law. I just wanna maintain my privacy. I, I, California law allows you to maintain your privacy even in public. So I feel that I understand the concern and not everyone will agree with me. But if we do move forward, I feel like there should be really extensive public conversation and consideration of all the costs and benefits and adequate policies in place to make sure that it's not misused and that our rights are protected. I think that community should be an equal partner in any decision about this. That we need to know when and why it's used, what it's intended to do and the real costs of the, in terms of dollars and our individual rights. I'm asking that the police department, if you haven't already done it, and maybe you have, again, I just found out about it this afternoon, to provide the council and the community members a surveillance impact report before purchasing any surveillance technology equipment. If we have one in place, I'd like it to be reviewed and published and not just, uh, an item on the agenda where more people would hear about it and, and look at it and come, or at least state with how they feel about it. Uh, I, I also think we should have a, the, the community should be involved with the council and the police department in our surveillance use policy, uh, before purchasing the technology. The difference, the impact report would have a description of the technology, how it works, what it collects, including spec sheets in the manufacturer, the names of the manufacturer, if we're gonna use this, an outside company, the name of the company. The proposed purpose of the technology, the specific locations where it will be deployed, crime statistics for these locations. We don't have a huge amount of crime. I know we've had a rash of burglaries, but I looked at what you publish on your website. It's not even above where it was back in two thousand eight and two thousand nine. We ha- it is, you know, up from the last couple of years. But I think it can be solved without necessarily having to impact our civil liberties. I also think that the fiscal cost should be part of it, including not just the initial purchase, but the personnel costs, the ongoing costs, maintenance costs, upgrading, ongoing training, how the officer's gonna be trained to use it. And then the potential cost of data hacks and lawsuits. Okay, last, last sentence. The surveillance policy should have clear limits on the surveillance, including when it's gonna be permitted or prohibited, what legal internal process is required to use it, how are the officers trained, making sure only the necessary data is collected. And I think that the data, we, we should have a discussion of the data retention limit and how is it deleted? Is it automatic, is it tactical, or does someone have to go in physically every year and look at it? And lastly, I think we should have an annual outside independent audit of the policy to be sure it's followed because it doesn't just impact the criminals, it impacts all of us. And, and it's not that I, I think you guys do a wonderful job. It's not that I have any concern about our current policy, our current officers. But if we don't have that policy, we can't control what goes on in the future. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? Well, we've sat here the whole meeting. Just likes us.
I would just, uh, be a part of the Northern California Regional Intelligence Center as their government private liaison. I thought an excellent presentation, Commander.
All right, we'll bring it back to the council for comments.
I got a comment.
Yeah, so.
So I, I, I really appreciate the comments. The community is concerned about the burglaries that we've experienced and it's true. We've had more burglaries in the past, in the ten-year past. And there is an uptick from over the last few years, probably two years or three years, I don't remember the specific date of it. There's a definite uptick and I have, uh, in the last six months, probably gotten more emails on that, on the burglary subject than any other. And there were quite a large number of people that showed up at the public meeting that we had in January, where this issue came up. And in response to that, I did some investigation and I discovered the private company, uh, that you mentioned. Uh, and I don't know if this company would make their cameras available to you to use and connect to NICRIP versus connecting to their cloud system. The two thousand dollars is an all-in fee. They own the equipment, they don't sell the equipment. They install the equipment, they replace it if stolen or damaged. They, they enable you to manage it and the, one of the most attractive things in their system is that, um, you can put in the license plate numbers of everyone that lives in your neighborhood and is going to pass by that camera. And they don't accumulate data on that set of license plates. They only accumulate data on other license plates. I don't know that that's applicable for our major intersections. Say, I live on a cul-de-sac. So, um, the members of my cul-de-sac are, we're gonna collectively put one of these in. And it's all, it's entirely for forensic purposes, so it is, but there is a deterrence that if a number, and, and there's gonna be somebody on Montevista that puts it into Montevista. And there are likely to be them deployed in several different areas in Atherton. And I think there's a really serious deterrent that once that information gets out, uh, that the, and we have the right to put up a camera on our property, which is what this is, it's just putting up a camera on your property, uh, that is connected to the internet and instead of the data going into your home computer, it goes into a cloud computer that you have access to and you can determine who else has access to it. And my, on my cul-de-sac, which is a small building, one person has access to it and there won't be access to any data for the registered license plates. So I think that's protective of, uh, the privacy of those that live on the cul-de-sac that doesn't protect anybody else's privacy. And I'm not, I, I completely agree that for us to implement any policies at town, we need to address the issues that you raised, I, I think. And, and that was looked at by Portola Valley when they did this and, um, and I think we need to look at the policies that, you know, others have put in place to figure out what the best practice would be. I think that, uh, I think it's a good thing to look at for Atherton to, uh, consider these in some limited number of intersections. I, I, I think frankly, I'm worried about the amount of data that we would accumulate from a large number of cameras, uh, because I think the cost is not just the implementation cost, but it's the management costs. And if you guys are capturing every, the, the license plate for every stolen car that goes to Atherton and, you know, through El Camino, Alameda and Middlefield Road or Marsh Road and having to follow up on that, that's gonna take a lot of time. So that worries me. I, um, I'm mostly interested in the deterrent value that results from the publication that we have that. And it, and we may get as much value at the deterrent notification level if there are ten small streets and cul-de-sacs that put in these privately managed solutions rather than having to engage our police force. But I do think that having the ability to, uh, to monitor it at the police level makes sense. Particularly where we know there's a problem and we don't wanna park a car to have to use a license plate reader, but we can do an installation and maybe Atherton Fiber will give us that flexibility because they'll have fired up those intersections that I, I think that's worth looking at. But I do think, I, I personally, I'm not interested in thirty-some cameras out there like Piedmont has. I think some much more limited number, you know, is something we should consider. And, and I think we have to look at the all-in cost. I, I, Piedmont's cameras are a lot more expensive than this other company's cameras. But, you know, the, the technology is changing fast in this area.
Mike, you got anything?
I, I have an opinion, I think it's, I think, again, it's helpful. I think the burglaries are an issue, it's helpful, I recognize that. I am uncomfortable with the, uh, privacy issues and struggling with how to, so I have a specific thing to tell you. I'm struggling with how to deal with them, they're very important to deal with. I will know, I mean, I grew up in Piedmont, right, so I'm very aware of Piedmont. That system was placed before twenty-fourteen. And, and Piedmont's a very different community, if you just think about it, it's, um, it, anyway, there's a reason that cameras might work there differently than here, I said that. I guess that's, I mean, I said earlier, I think there's nerves with both safety cameras and the, the license plate readers. And, and I feel like we have more control with both safety cameras and that's a less intrusive system that if it gets you ninety percent of the same thing, I'd like to explore that. Although it raises a lot of cost issues and everything else, I'll need to look at it, so.
I, 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 I think that times in society have changed and I know that we've mentioned burglaries, but the reality is in California, crime rate in California's got a, uh, realigned medicine, more people out there doing different types of crimes. And we're seeing that effect across the board, um, in criminal stats. So the focus and the commentary related to just burglaries, it's, it's really not the only tool. And I can say that there have been multiple things over the years that we've gone to our residents to try to, you know, get cameras. And a lot of our residents, you know, may have very nice homes, but they actually have pretty lousy camera systems. And we found that out in certain points. And, um, I think that, uh, a blended system as a component, I mean, there's clearly a cost factor. This is the dream factor is if you have all the money in the world, we don't. I think that the, a few years ago, I, I looked at a camera system, um, that would be able to assist the town and the safety of the civic center component and the rail corridor and the reduction of suicides. I think that there's technology and such that's out there that can help. I mean, the one problem that we have is the limitation of manpower. And cameras and, and general, and LPRs gave us a reduction in manpower. And, um, we are obviously finding with the string of burglaries that we have currently, it's very strenuous on the existing manpower and the limitations that we have in manpower. But the LPR component of the license plate reader component, and if other jurisdictions have LPRs as well, it can narrow things down with jurisdictional matching of, um, information exchange related to two o'clock morning, uh, license plate, you know, pops up once because we really do shut down at night in, in the town. So things like that can be very helpful tools in furthering an investigation. And also as Piedmont has, it does send a message. I worked in East Bay for quite some time and Piedmont, everybody knew that Piedmont had LPRs and took wrong. So the message does get out there to the criminal element that you in fact don't want to be in those jurisdictions if you're gonna do things because you don't know where. So the mobility of a LPR also is, um, a very, a beneficial issue to me. I think the in and out, we have multiple, multiple in and out locations because criminals usually don't, as we kind of, kind of know, typically don't live here. So they usually are leaving the jurisdiction, um, having the entrance and exit, most common entrance and exit points covered under something. It's another tool that can, you know, get that case one step forward. So again, I think the blended component, I'm less concerned related to the LPR component because it is just literally a license plate component and a database collection. And, um, you have to have a case number and a reason to be going into it. Sometimes the systems are not accessed at all. I do like the fact that, um, the hot component of plates that are stolen that are entered into the system do trigger an alert system because I do think that this department is very reactionary to telephone calls, dogs barking, they're the only, we have a good response time. A indicator of a hot vehicle is also usually an indicator that that's most likely a criminal that's driving that vehicle that is stolen. So we can potentially use it as a measure to, um, prevent crimes because they're actually on their way or just getting done with one. So do you think that that's another positive factor, um, in the LPR component? Two bits.
Okay, uh, my final comment before we decide whether, what we want the city manager to do. We already have the license plate reader in one of the cars. You know, I think that there are some very valid points, uh, up already with regards to, we need to take a hard look at retention policies, the amount of data, access to the data. I do appreciate the fact that we got a copy of the ordinance that Michael Park uses. We should do a survey of some of the other ones. And, uh, and then make a better informed decision as to how we move forward, but I do think that we need to. I would recommend that we continue to progress the discussion on this and research in it. I think that there was, and get some additional community input. I think that those are all, uh, great things that the next steps for us. To do that, we need to get the, to have a city community meeting, we need to have more research done. So I think we need to, I would like to recommend that we authorize the city manager to work with our police department and direct the police department to do some additional studying and see what. studying and see what other communities have done. Uh, see what safeguards will be in place, uh, that we need to put in place where people have had unauthorized, uh, access potentially or information leakages. Um, and, and understand where the, the privacy issues have arisen and how they've been safeguarded. Um, and so my recommendation would be that I would hope, I'd like to make a motion that we ask the city manager to direct the police department to continue the research, not to buy anything or come back with any procurement issues, but answer some of these questions that were brought up. Uh, and, and then bring it back to the council and/or a public meeting, perhaps a separate, separate public meeting where we make sure that we have the word out so that as many advocates one way or the other could come and we can hear what their concerns are. So we can address those. If we decide to move forward, we can address those. In the meantime, if somebody wants to do something on their cul-de-sac, obviously they're happy, they're welcome to go do that. Is there a second on my?
I think that that's consistent with the staff direction. I think we're good with that.
Also, if you're talking.
I don't think you need a motion.
Well, so his recommendation, authorize the city manager to direct staff to begin research, identifying and developing options to implement. So if there's.
If you need it authorized, I'll give you a, if it's unauthorized, I'll give you a second and we'll formalize it.
Okay.
Second.
Hey.
I have a question on the motion before it was for the, with respect to the community meeting. And we're gonna go out and gather data, get more information, develop some costing, what it would look like, possibly some interceptions, things like that, other policies and safeguards. Do you wanna have the community meeting before or after the next council meeting? Or do a full council community meeting just on this topic?
Well, I, I think that the comment from the, for me, the comment from the audience was she happened to come across this by reading the omnibus. And, and maybe if we would do a little bit better publicizing that we're talking about people's privacy and tracking of certain things, uh, so that anybody who really wants to come, would come. It could be a council meeting.
So you think more of a council item that's just broadened?
Yes, we get a chance to get everybody's concerns and the, and we then know as we craft policies how we might kinda change those.
Okay.
Is that, is that okay or?
Yeah, I feel fine about that. I, I'd, I'd like you to, I, I think it's great receiving of our policy. I'd like to know what Portola Valley did. Um, they, you know, looked pretty seriously at this issue and initially rejected it and only went into it after a couple of home invasion, uh, robberies. Uh, and maybe I, whatever other highly restrictive, uh, uh, ordinances that are out there, maybe tip her on that.
I'd like to hear what Mike has to say because Mike was more strongly than the rest of the three of us on the, the privacy issue.
Yeah, my thoughts are largely in COVID though. And I think that the, the gist of it was, and I apologize now, I don't know your name.
Christine Curry.
Well, I appreciate the comment you made that this affects all of us, you know? And that's what's interesting is that it's surveillance, not just of bad actors, but of all of us. And, and that, that rings very true to me that, you know, we should be aware that most of the people that are getting caught in contact are just average folks going through their day, doing nothing wrong. And that we need to be very respectful of that.
Right.
Um, I don't know exactly what that means. I do think it's worth pursuing, so I agree it's worth pursuing. I also agree that it, um, that we should be seek to facilitate community input. And so if we do it at a council meeting, we should make efforts to, you know, draw up some, some stuff like that. But I would like to see the restrictive thing that other people have done, there's more lines other people have drawn. Because again, my, my point is that this does work, right? This is helpful in reducing crime. And I think that's a factor to be balanced really.
All right.
I'll second that because we're formalizing it.
Yep.
Okay, Elizabeth's not on the phone anymore, so we don't have to do all, all in favor.
All right.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, I'd like to convene a meeting of the Atherton Channel District. We have to take a little call.
Here.
Well, it's no longer the same. Well, it says here on it, says that convene.
No, but everybody's here except for Elizabeth and she's no longer.
Okay, all right, great. So, uh, Robert.
Great, thank you Chair, members of the board. Um, this is a continuation of a discussion that we've been having for some time regarding the Atherton Channel District and its, um, financial challenges. Uh, we have some data provided, um, that was asked for previously regarding what level of improvements were identified in the drainage master plan update that was done back in um, twenty fifteen. And um, of the forty-one million dollars that were identified, about fifty-seven percent of those dollars were within the Atherton Channel District. Um, and what you'll notice is that, uh, a lot of that is front loaded in, um, tier one and tier two in terms of the types of projects. Um, having an understanding of that dollar amount is really important in terms of what that means and if you're gonna go with special assessment or tax or other things. And you received a presentation by, uh, from Tim Suford of NBS on some of those financing options. And what we're seeking from you tonight is if you wanna talk about some of those projects or, um, provide us with some sort of direction if you wanna move forward at this time or at a later date with any of the funding options that were provided.
Any questions for Robert based on the report and his quick summary?
Fantastic, gentlemen.
Okay, uh, okay, there's no public, so we won't be looking back out unless somebody else has a question. Okay, so we'll bring it back to council after your no public comment, plus Joe wants to say something. Okay. Oh, but?
Uh, I just think that this is gonna, you know, this is something, obviously, I think it's gonna have a little bit of a life to it, um, related to projects, especially with considerations of water capture facility, um, that we're discussing. So, um, you know, I, I, I think there's some difficulty in the numbers. And I agree with the numbers that are here. It's just forty-one million dollars.
Robert?
Yeah. That's it. Uh, so I think that where there is necessary repair to be done to the Atherton Channel, which is the only thing that's in tier one and the only thing I'm really paying any attention to, that, that cost needs to be put to the Atherton Channel members. And I understand that the only way that there can be an increase in tax is from a vote of the Atherton Channel members. It's not a two eighteen issue, as I understand it. It, which, uh, but it's actually requires a greater, a two-thirds vote, I thought, and Elizabeth, uh, I think said on the phone today that it's, uh, uh, that she understands there's still a legislature to change that. But whether that applies to our Atherton Channel District or not, I don't know. But I think that there are, we, we've gotten a drainage report that says that there is repair that needs to be done to this channel. And I, I think that the responsible thing to do is for us to put that to the Channel District to a vote. And if they don't wanna pay for it, then they don't, they don't wanna pay for it. But that's on them. Uh, as the directors of the district, I think we've been advised by consultants that it needs to be done. I do think that we've improperly, on behalf of the town of Atherton, assumed some costs in the past because I don't think we were really focused on being the board of the district. And we did the drainage master plan from the town and that includes drainage areas that are in addition to the Atherton Channel District, right? We've got a couple other drainage districts, so I think that's fine. We did improve the Atherton Channel District along Marsh Road at the cost from the town that exceeded the contribution from the Channel District. And for this kind of work, I think we should put it to the Channel District. That's my opinion. And if they don't vote, and I, I think we should properly publicize it and encourage them to vote for it. And we should, I, it needs to be done and, um, uh, and we should encourage it. But if they vote against it, then they vote against it. And that's on them.
Just like branches of legal like this on this, uh, with, what Rick says, I mean, say there's a catastrophic failure and they, nobody wants to vote in favor of repairing the catastrophic failure, where do we come in as the governing body saying, well, we gotta have the money and we gotta have a vote? Is there an emergency provision or is there a, any type of override? Or is there just a special assessment of the cost of repair that's actually distributed that cost out? It just doesn't seem right.
I think it's different, I think it's more of a liability issue than a cost issue.
There, there are so many factors to this. Liability issues are strange and huge. The, as I understand it, this is a special district and the special district has its own rules. Um, look, it's, it's like anything else. If, if any of the utilities that we, that a, that a public agency would fund fail, well, if you don't have insurance, then it's on you. Um, and therein is the rub. Um, it's not on the utility user, it's not on everybody upstream or PG, well, PG needs to declare his bankruptcy and runs, but, um, it, it, the issues are kind of similar if you think about it. Right now, we, we face potentially, the, the district faces potential liability downstream where it floods and it floods on somebody's property. That's, that was a no-brainer. It's taking of their property, temporary, but it's still a taking of their property. Um, it could be more serious if homes and things like that were involved. But it's the same, there's no answer to this, no good answer, other than, um, Rick's right. It should be on the district. But if you live in the district and your only utilization of this is your stormwater flows off your property into a gutter and disappears, and somebody comes to you and says, we'd like you to pay twelve thousand dollars a year more as your fair share of making your water go away, and that's a hard sell on a vote. I mean, other agencies, other places that tried it, it's just a hard sell. But that's a political thing, not a, I mean legally, Carrie, that, you know, when we find out more what you wanna do, I think Robert's done a great job of looking into this. Um, and they're outlined in there, every time that there's a two-thirds requirement, you know, that's a mountain.
Yeah, I, I just think that in, in a sense as a director, that, you know, we have no choice but to make the attempt to ask the question because I believe we have negligence and we don't. Uh, and, and if you say no, it's no, but then we got another problem that we'd have to have further discussion on. But I think that with some of these issues that are priority one, that we do have failure, et cetera, et cetera, we don't have a choice. We have to put it out. We have to do our due diligence to make sure that we do the engineering component, um, and make the attempt to pass it through the voters and say, hey, you know, we need, this is not what we want, that we have no choice, these are needs that we have in the channel. So, I mean, I think this kind of process is of a no choice. We can't ignore it like it's been done.
Mike, go.
Yeah, my sense is, is we're being asked for, I guess, two questions, um, maybe more because there's timing tied in there and everything else. But, but one question is funding level. I agree with Rick's basic premise, obviously, which is responsibility of the sp, the special district, we should figure out a way to, to be responsive to a problem that even told exists and we need to address. Um, I would question, however, whether we're limited only to tier one or whether it's one of those things where if we are going, if we are gonna go out to a, to a, talk to the voters, is there, you know, should we be folding something else in there? Should we make a, a larger picture? Because tier one really is, we're patching up a problem.
Right.
It's really not going anywhere beyond that. And that's, yeah, I think we should have that conversation about whether you wanna vote in on that. Uh, my next thing is, I'm not sure, every time I have two thirds, I don't really fully understand the options that are here. There's one option that seems to require less than two thirds. And I don't know how that, if we can get there, that seems like a more logical place to get, get to. I'm not sure, I don't have a full grasp of the pluses or minuses to the other special benefit.
One's a tax, one's a fee, one's an assessment. So those are the three options. The assessment, the benefit assessment district is a different set of laws than a tax adoption. Uh, and it requires.
It's expensive upfront because an engineer has to go out and look at every single parcel and determine their share of benefit from the system. And that gets crazy and expensive. But it only requires fifty plus one votes, fifty percent plus one vote. The others require two thirds because the tax and, and, you know, special assessments.
Fifty plus one in pro case.
Yeah, pro case.
Yeah, yeah, pro case.
But that's really the same thing.
Under two eighteen.
Well, of the votes received.
Right. The votes received.
Yeah.
So, um, my two cents on this is, uh, the town has been coordinating and making drainage prob, issues, uh, or drainage corrections over very many years. And the drainage, um, district was created because we were doing things in that drainage channel and we ran into some problems with regards to certain wildlife that then we had to establish changes to their environment or, and monitor the changes that we were making to make sure they continued to thrive. And so, but all along, the town has been paying for this. I looked over the answers of the, or the, the types of projects that are in that tier one. Most of them are at the Alameda or further west. So there are a small number of communities or, or residents that are, that are actually getting any benefit out of that. The rest of the residents aren't getting anything. I think we're gonna be hard pressed to get somebody to, to, uh, to agree to pay for that. Um, and, and on top of that, I think that we did get a defeat on the parcel tax and I don't think we have a lot of money left. And I think that really, we need to take a hard look at all those things that are in there. Just because they were put into the, the drainage master plan at the time that we built that, I, I brought this up every time we look at this, we have not clearly done our due diligence to say, is this really necessary and is this, is this, that not the responsibility of the homeowner, et cetera? I think we need to look at that really very closely before we start going and asking people for money. And before we find a way potentially for us to get the door swam again in our face. If we're gonna go out and ask people for money, then I think that we need to be relatively comfortable that we're going to get it. And I just don't think that those projects that were listed there are, are appropriate. What type of drainage projects do we need to do? I think we have some simpler drainage problems that will actually add a lot of benefit to the whole town. I think we can start by focusing on these streets and corners where before it even rains, we have a sign up that says flooded. So let's fix those before we say to some people, we need to make, we need to have you guys give us another twenty-one million dollars. I just, I, I said, I'm not with you, okay?
Nobody's saying twenty-one million dollars.
Well, I'm just saying.
That's your fabrication.
Well, I'd like for twenty-one million dollars.
But that's, but look.
I'm just saying, okay? All I'm saying, I'm just giving you my opinion, just so everybody will see it there. So that's my opinion. Um, and I don't think we have the money to do it right now, and I think we have our hands full with the tasks ahead of us on the civic center. So, you know, I know that we're spending time looking into leaf blowers and rakes, but, uh, I, you know, I prefer not to be having Robert spend any more time on this at this point in time until we're done streaming with our, with our project. That's my recommendation.
Do we have time on this? Is there a sense that we're facing a kind of critical failure issue?
No, I think the, the biggest critical failure issue was Marsh Road, the council addressed that one.
You know, this is obviously something that takes years to, to get moving. And while I agree with Bill on the drill down on projects and such, you know, this is a process that is, it's torturous and cumbersome at best. But in looking at these projects, I mean, it looks like there's a Selby Lane project here. In this process that we're required to do, I, I thank Bill for, uh, opening up the door and going to everybody's house on Selby Lane and telling them, you need to assess your drainage issue. But in doing so, um, we also have one point one million dollars in Alameda and Alameda. These are all. These are all impactful locations. Does this tier, I mean, because let's say the person on, we're, we're asking for a, a special assessment of hundred and twenty-five dollars for people on Selby Lane because they have a larger contribution. That is just, that sounds like an absolute nightmare as far as a tax roll or an assessment is concerned. It's truly, you know, very least on street location and blah, blah. I mean, did I say two years?
That's special assessment, benefit assessment. And the word benefit, you have to.
Direct benefit.
You have to match the benefit with the parcel as to how much they contribute. And, and system-wise, if you did the whole, if you made a benefit.
Across the board.
Across the whole Atherton Channel District, um, that would be an awful lot of money outpouring initially and I'm not sure how much, how long it'd take to recoup even the startup cost.
I can see quite a few more meetings before we.
Prop twenty-six does.
There is a question. Is SF Waterline Reservoir Channel, is that, that's Reservoir Road? Is that what that is?
Where are you looking at?
I'm looking at Tier One, first item, pitch four, first top.
Okay.
Twenty-three, six.
So, there was a map and a list of projects. So that's the Atherton Channel north of I-280 between the San Francisco Waterline and the Res- and Reservoir Road.
Yeah. So, so Bill's right that all four of the items listed in Tier One are west of Alameda. Um, my only comment is, we got a report from a consultant that said these are Tier One, which I interpret that to mean more important than anything else. If they're not really important, I, I don't want, I can't make the judgment and say, no, these aren't important. Let's just ignore the report that we got from the consultant. If the consultant said these are Tier One, I think we need to know what the level of urgency is with them so that, um, we aren't negligent by not bringing this to some. I don't think we should pay for it. It's in the Atherton Channel. Now, maybe only some property should pay for it in the Atherton Channel, or maybe we should just ignore it. But I don't want to make the decision that these are unimportant when some consultant that we've hired has told us that these are the most important things on the list.
We have a staff member. You know, a consultant is, he gives us a report and that consultant, if he came back and said everything was hunky-dory and then we had any flooding whatsoever, we've been able to sue him, okay? So he put anything and everything down to protect himself. Now, I'm not saying that that's what everything is, but we've not gone that back and identified that, A, these are, and I've been saying this for like three years now, these are things that are, are clearly not the residents' problem, that they're the town's problem and clearly they need to be done right now. Okay, how, how, what have I just finished? For years, okay, I've been on this council now for nine years and for every one of those nine years up to the time that we set the, decided to move forward with the Marsh Road, the road was going to collapse in the next three weeks. Seriously. And it didn't. Oh, by the way, and I bet you if we didn't do the Marsh Road until this week, the road wouldn't have collapsed. Okay? Was it timely to do it? Yes, but it wasn't critical.
So the, on, uh, table six point two, with respect to H, and if you're talking about Vice Mayor, it does have some photos from two thousand one, two thousand thirteen, where the consultant's compared it to and shown that the main problem there is soil erosion of the lines of the channel. Uh, so the recommendation is to, you know, re-line the channel in those areas. Uh, but also in that, uh, study that was done when we did it in twenty-fourteen, I think it was, uh, as the mayor indicated, there, there was a sentence or two in there that said, some of these projects may not be the responsibility of the town. There needs to be further investigation to make that documentation. We do have money that comes in for the Channel District now, about ninety-three thousand or something a year.
Maybe so.
Something like that. Uh, some of that is used for mitigation projects on the frog. I think that's out there for monitoring.
Maybe, but, yeah, favorite frog.
But we can accumulate some of that money and do a study, uh, to help us assess or suss out what the ones are private and which ones are the district's responsibility. And try and winnow that six million dollars down a bit and then come back and through the council or the district and talk further.
Can I, uh, I found last few years back when we actually did the tour of the channel, very informative as far as, you know, seeing, I mean, we see it on paper.
Right.
Uh, that was very helpful and if we can coordinate something as we work through this process, it'd be helpful, you know, to get an eyes on, um, you know, where we could spend money.
Good point. So one other, wait, wait, if, if, if the issue's erosion and stuff like that, um, it might be worth asking, is there a less expensive alternative that's a, a patch instead of a replace?
You have these cement bags on the side of the road.
I'm sorry, do I say?
I said like they put in the park, they put these cement bags on the side.
Yeah.
On the bank and then after they got wet, they hardened and they became hardened place. I mean, that's, but that's one step. I'm not saying that's the end of the deal, but that's, that's.
That's worth asking.
Cheap and dirty, is that cheap and dirty trick?
Cheap and dirty.
I mean, just looking at the photos, it may be that it's, you know, there's differences in importance of, of the four items listed in Tier One. Uh, and one shows the culvert under Alameda. So it's public and going into the culvert that goes through on the, on the school.
Yeah.
And I think we're all pretty familiar with that one because we did some research on that one. We're looking at putting the, uh, water treatment facility there.
Correct, yeah.
And we all know that that culvert is small, but it's a big job for increasing the size of it.
And the school is.
That doesn't strike me as, and the school's going to be responsible for what happens under the school.
Yeah.
And if I'm not, if they take their base of action and would they have a surface-grade control basin?
Yeah, so we just need to look at this again.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
By walking up there through maybe where this item number one is, would be an interesting thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Carrie's comment.
Yeah.
And the line for it.
I, I, I mean, I'll walk around one.
That's it, that's kind of why.
That's what we're doing.
I think that it would be worthwhile to also, and maybe you, maybe staff knows, but to understand this Channel District better because we really have just focused on it recently. Um, and I know that it was created by a special state law and that, that there was much larger amount of assessment, I think, prior to Prop thirteen. And, and, and I only know that because I saw the record of what was collected over a couple of years. And so we can do some research and understand that. If, if at any point we need to go out and ask people for money, we clearly should talk about how much less is required.
We need to recall that Prop twenty-six was adopted in two thousand and ten and Prop twenty-six was called the Stop Hidden Taxes Act. And it says any fee, assessment, or charge by municipality is presumed to be a tax unless it falls in one of seven exemptions. And they don't give a damn about what happened back in nineteen fifty-something or sixty-something. It is going forward. So we're stuck with the numbers we have unless you want to go out and get a two-thirds vote of the public for most of these things. Fees are, fees are the, the only example where you might be able to increase the fee. The problem is fees are limited by Prop thirteen and Prop two-eighteen. And, I, I mean, the, the, don't tax me people have done a pretty good job of bungling a lot of these things up to where it's really difficult to, for government to take, to, to take these problems and fix them. And I, and I say that not lightly.
So we can, we can go out and a- address some of those issues and if we need some assistance in doing so, we'll come back here with that request as well.
Great. Is that alright? So we discussed it. Uh, so let's reconvene the city council meeting. Okay, number twenty, city manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and members of the council. At eleven P M, this is a pro forma issue. Uh, we've covered this before for public safety. This is the local miscellaneous side. This is the amendment to the Cal-First contract to ratify the additional amount that the miscellaneous are paying for the town chair of Cal-First.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Any public comment? Nope. Hey, any last comments by council or resolution?
Uh, no.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Uh, so moved.
And somebody like to say, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Well, if the last one wasn't authorized, did they have to?
Too late.
You authorize it, perform a motion.
Any question?
We adopted, they, they talked about, but I didn't hear them.
For nineteen?
That was just us.
No, I'm just asking you, if, I was writing down stuff I didn't.
It's just like that.
Did you have a vote?
Yeah, we did.
That was my question. I was writing down something about your last item.
You did, that's all.
Okay, number twenty-one, council reports and comments. I would just like to say that in the coming up meeting in either May or June, when we have, uh, I think it's maybe a June meeting.
So during study session, maybe you have.
Because, that's, so in the May study session perhaps, we need to have our council reports.
Right.
I'm ready, you start that.
Yeah.
So, any report outs?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll be ready. My subcommittee will be ready, won't we, Bill?
Yeah, I got it. Okay, so I think we need to restart thinking about that, maybe making the notes. Anybody want to have a future agenda? Anything that isn't what we already talked about? Okay, go ahead.
And I know it's late. Okay, so I, I've talked to the city manager about this, but we know in June, we're going to have appointments to, uh, town committees, to the official committees. And I would like us to consider, to have that on an agenda item maybe net this coming month. Not for the appointment, but if you look at, and the thing that really struck me is Teresa sent out the appointments list of all the positions that are going to come up. And on the Vipad Committee, there's five positions coming up because we created that committee maybe four years ago or five years ago, I'm not sure. And we authorized everyone at the same time and their terms all expired at the same time. So I think for our committees, we should never have more than one or two.
Same time.
People come up the same year. We should spread them out so you have one person, two people, one person, two people, one person. And that composes the committee over four years. So, you know, everybody's got their four-year term. But to make that work, the initial term has got to be two years for some people and three years for.
That's the, that's the normal way of doing it, is to stagger them.
I think what he's saying is he must talk about that the next week.
They're not staggered and I'd like a proposal from staff for all of the committees, I think, to event the staggering.
So what does that mean? We have run off some data from the Vipad Committee, so it's not the same.
So, no, I, some people will re-up, they'll seek to re-up and we should give those people the four-year term, but.
So as, out of curiosity, the people that re-up, can we, would we consider like a two-year for the re-uppers and then the new people take the four?
And then we've.
No, I think the new people. I think that's what we're supposed to talk about next week.
I'm just curious. That's a great idea.
A future agenda.
Great idea, right?
Okay, alright, any other future agenda?
Most of them are.
No, 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 we have to see if Greg wants to come in.
I'd like to be here.
Those who do, do.
Aye.
Okay.
I'll be.
Thank you all, the, the.